People wonder why you're nodding, right?
Yeah. Right up.
I'll do it until I get dizzy and then I'll put my other one on. It's 5:30. We will call this planning zoning commission meeting order. Everybody stand and face the flag, please.
The flag is defying the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. A nation where God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So this is planning zoning commission. We are located at 1500 Highway 2 Sandpoint, Idaho. Third floor Bonner County Commissioners Meeting Room. A roll call from my left, please.
Commissioner Bradish.
Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Glasso.
Commissioner Bailey as chair. We've had one change in the agenda. We won't be hearing file V 0007-21 this evening. It's been rescheduled for May 6th. Are any other changes in the agenda? Okay. And we have a consult agenda for three minutes. Starting with April 1st, April 14th, and April 15th. Did everybody read those and have any objections? Okay, bearing down. Call those good. No more seats? Just looking at people in the hallway. No more seats. There might be a couple chairs and that.
One over there.
Yeah, there's two out there. You can stand over here or sit on the edge over here. That'll work. So if everybody has a chance, please look up on the hearing procedures for this evening. Testify, you're allowed three minutes. You can yield, somebody else can yield you three minutes of your time. Our total is six, okay? Public meeting, everybody needs to be cordial to each other. Okay, being it's 5:32, our first file is conditional use permit 0007-21. Gravel pit rock crushing. Bonner County is requesting to expand its gravel pit and rock crushing onto parcels. Property is zone rule five. The project is located off Highway 41 in a portion section is seven township 54 north. Range five Blazey Meridian. Are there any conflicts, interests? No. Okay. Mr. Overton?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave some of this for the applicant to review. Just want to go over with you a little bit of the staff report and then review some of the codes and that apply to this. This is a request for gravel pit, rock crushing operation at the county owned pit. Out in, out in this area, there's, there's a picture of it applied in the staff report showing the two parcels. The screen above me is not good. So in the, in the comp, in the zoning ordinance, I want, I wanted to, instead of, instead of put these on slides, I wanted to be able to show you actually in the code. So folks could get an idea of, of the code and how it works. This is the actual code that's online, that you can access online. Mining is listed in the resource based use table. Table 36. Mining and rock crushing operations are here. They're conditional use permits. When we look at which zones they apply in, forestry, ag forest, rural, residential, industrial, rec, recreation. Rock crushing is specific to industrial and then the three rural ag forest and forest 40. Note that it's not, that it's allowed through a conditional use permit and that there's a note number five that applies to this application. When we go down to the standards, number five, the, the rock crushing where access to the site is by road. The road shall be located with a recorded easement or public right of way and constructed to appropriate standards set forth in title two of this. So we go to the map and, and access to the property is directly onto Highway 41. So it meets that standard. It's important to note that because a conditional use permit, when, when these, when these tables are established, the, the planning commission along with public hearings identify the uses that are allowed in all the various zones. And when they, when they allow a conditional use permit, they're saying that the use is allowed as long as it meets these certain conditions. So a rock crushing operation is allowed in these zones. It just has to meet these conditions. And so that is what staff does is staff reviews the application to make sure it meets the standards in the code. So the use has already been considered as a possibility. The, the purpose of this hearing tonight is so the planning commission can verify that the application does meet the conditions in the code. So, so far, the only condition that relates to this is number five, which talks about access to a main road, which it does have. It meets that condition. There's another section in the code, 12482 called mining. Now you understand that the application was for rock crushing, but nevertheless, the mining is part of that type of an operation. And so we reviewed this application against the standards. Now, again, let me explain that a conditional use permit means that in order for the operation to, to move forward, to be issued, for the conditional use to be issued, conditions can be placed on the application and on the applicant. And once those conditions are met, they can be approved. And so sometimes the, the standards that are in here cannot be met until the operation is actually in play. And so that's why we add these conditions to the application. At the time of the application, we had not received a reclamation plan. We have since received a reclamation plan. The application for such and had the chance to review that. The setbacks, again, we added a condition to the staff report that the setbacks will have to be paid attention to and watched as, and met as, as the operation moves forward. Dust abatement, the applicant shall apply dust abatement. Obviously, that's not something that happens right at the beginning of the operation. It happens throughout the operation. And so the, the applicant, so we add a condition that dust abatement is applied to the project. No debris from the mining operation shall be placed or tracked onto public rides away by vehicles. Again, that's not something that we do right at the beginning, something we do throughout. That becomes a condition. Fugitive dust is the same. Those standards are addressed as conditions of the conditional use permit. Complying with the requirements of the reclamation plan, again, just it was added as a condition. All retail sales of materials on the site are prohibited. So it's important to note here that this is a county application and they cannot sell retail anyway. And so this, this is not a retail operation. It's not a, you know, it's not an operation that's going to operate all the way through the year. It's going to operate seasonally as, as the road department needs these types of materials. And so it's not going to be a, you know, 12 month operation. And then retail sales of materials on site are prohibited, just adds to confirm that. There's signs on the site comply with the standards. Again, these are just conditions that become part of the staff report and the application. The applicant shall maintain install hazard fencing and signing. Again, not necessarily required upfront, required as part of the operation. Maintain and restore vegetative buffering of the site. Not only is that here, but it's also part of the reclamation plan. So the applicant's aware of that. And again, those things happen throughout the project. Interesting to note that in the comprehensive plan, the only, the conditional use permit has to be in compliance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Okay? So, so there's, the comprehensive plan consists of, of a large set of analysis. Sections full of analysis, but, but what counts are the goals and policies. So when I go to the goals and policy section of the comprehensive plan, the only place that it uses the word mining is in economic development and it says historic natural resource based industries, industries such as mining are recognized as viable components of Bonner County's economic health and shall be retained and encouraged to develop. And so this application is in compliance with this goal and policy in the comprehensive plan. Therefore, it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So as, as we go back to the, the staff report and, and gone through all of this analysis with you, the, the conclusion was that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan and consistent with the zoning ordinance and conditions were added to ensure that it maintains consistent with the zoning code. So those are the findings of fact. The conclusions of law are that yes, it is in compliance and has the opportunity to be approved by the planning commission. Staff would recommend approval of the conditional use permit and allow this to proceed. The end.
Thank you. Mr. Clatt, you had said the answer.
Steve Clatt, Roden Bridge Director for the record. I see faces that are not that impressed with, I was thinking it'd be more advantageous if we were next to public roads rather than private roads because public roads are a little more inclined to think that they might get some of the product from this pit. That being the case, the first thing I'd like to bring up is that this is a historic pit. This pit goes back to the eighties. It was first developed by Newport Concrete, sold to Interstate and then sold to Bonner County. Interstate Newport operated in Old Town. Interstate bought that plant. This was the pit that supplied their operation in Old Town. This is not an ideal pit for concrete operations. And then when they, when Interstate decided it was appropriate to close their Old Town operation and centralize it in Rathrum, it did not be warrant what they needed to do and that was do what we're doing right now. They decided they would just as soon sell the pit. And so the pit was on the market for a number of years. I think it went on the market about 2010, 2011. Bonner County had conversations with Interstate and their parent company, Old Castle for a number of years, the possibility of buying this, this pit. And we did finally consummate the sale in 2017. And interestingly enough, Interstate bought in the, in the nineties, I believe, they bought ground from Ruben Akry, who was the developer of Akry, Acres and Akria Estates on the other side. So Ruben, prior to ever developing land, it sold the ground that, that we're talking about expanding this site into. So in his own mind, he saw the compatibility of a gravel operation and residential subdivision. That, but I think Interstate didn't see that the pit warranted for their operation, the process of that we have to go through. And it starts with this, this process and it's also both a reclamation plan and filing that reclamation plan. And we did file that reclamation plan. We filed it last year. We posted the bond on it actually in January, 1st of February. We have not yet gotten final approval. We have a number of emails that indicate there is nothing wrong and there's no, no reason that the reclamation plan will not be approved. I don't know if any of you tried to get a license plate, but things are moving a little slowly in Boise right now. So our reclamation plan is in that, but it is definitely on file and has been there. As a neighbor of Bonner County in a gravel pit, this is a sole source for Bonner County. There is, Milton mentioned, we're by contract when we purchase it. There's a non-retail clause in it that we cannot sell gravel. It's not our intentions to sell gravel. This is solely for Bonner County to work on the roads that are in the Blanchard area. And that includes the roads that are out in the Spirit Lake area in, in that circle that is around Blanchard. So it's a limited number of roads that we're trying to service out of there. I heard the comment from my neighbor on a chair that those of you who live out there that have to acquire gravel, it's, it's troublesome. Well, when you're running a road system and you're trying to do road improvements and the quantities of gravel that you use, it really is troublesome for us to get material into Blanchard area. We've had road improvement projects out in the Blanchard area that we just simply have not been able to accrue up to get the material out to. And that's why we purchased this pit simply for the Blanchard area. This pit in Bonner County operation is going to be sporadically operated and it's got a lifespan that far exceeds mine. It's just going to be, this is going to be a pit that will be used. Occasionally, like we intend to bring a crusher in this year and crush and that crusher would probably not be, he'll be in there for five or six weeks this year. Provided we get the reclamation plan and we get the approval that we're looking for. Then we probably would not have a crusher back in there for the next three or four years. That's the sort of operation that we would have. Our construction season is really a pretty short season. I know that it talked about and there were concerns about that we'd be having 80 trucks a day in there. But typically what we do and we operate in three different districts in Bonner County. So we have a half a dozen trucks that are hauling in a construction season on construction projects. And those trucks will be rounding out in the Blanchard area. That construction season would be, is probably approximately four to six weeks that we would be working on roads in any specific area, just given the number of other things that we do. We have a mag chloride season that we first take care of. And we have a chip ceiling season that we take care of. Those things are the priorities for the maintenance of the roads. Then we get to the construction season. It's a fairly short window before it gets interrupted by elk season. So that's, that's the life you live in in the road department. So it's a four to six week season and, and in the Blanchard area. We have wanted to be out in the Blanchard area for the last three or four years and, and are scheduling with the approvals of, with this project approval, the Blanchard area would be the focus of the construction season for this year. And that would probably be about a four week window that we'd be working on some of the roads in the Blanchard area. That we'd be hauling out of there with those six trucks rounding out if they can round out a half hour, that's unlikely. So even reaching 80 trucks a day in a 10 hour workday from the time you leave Sago where the shop is at for that district, until you get back at the end of the day, it's unlikely we'd ever even reach 80 trucks a day. I know there was concern in that about shake brakes as, as one thing, compression brakes. Well, our trucks would be coming into the pit empty. We, our method of operation for drivers and driver courtesies are our drivers rarely only use brakes, shake brakes, compression brakes when it's an emergency situation and they truly need to stop their truck. That's not highway driving. We listen to compression brakes right here. There's a sign right down the road that says no compression brakes in City Sandpoint. And we find more often than not, empty logging trucks going by with younger drivers who love their exhaust noise dumping their jakes as they drive right by this building. An empty truck, there's not a reason in the world that you need to use a jake. Our, our trucks don't need to use compression brakes going into the pit. So that will not be a noise. The crushing will be, it's, it's talking to the rock crusher. They would be in there for five or six weeks. And, and then not returning again. Really, it could be three years, it could be four years and it could easily be five years before they come back in there. There's concern raised about blasting. The method of blasting, it'd be the parcel to the north would be the parcel or the parcel to, not the, yeah, the parcel to the north. We got one parcel where there's hard rock in that, that we'd, we'd go in and blast in the, in you. Blasting is, if you've been around, if you haven't been around it, it's not what you typically think of as blasting. You go in with a track drill, you drill holes, you drill them deep. You shoot your rock and then you go back in and scalp the rock after. So you shoot patterns of, there'd be several shot patterns that would go in. That would be done and you're shooting a pattern. Usually you're shooting a pattern for several crushing sessions. So the, the blasting would be one, one of the things that would happen very occasionally and would be a very short duration. The drills, surprisingly enough, you don't really, they're diesel compressive low RPM drill. You do not hear them anywhere near the extent that you, not like a jackhammer. It's just, it's, it's much more subtle noise than you would ever think. So, and this would be, once again, that'd be a very rare occasion when that is done. The setbacks that we are, have proposed is a 60 foot setback, vegetative setback for the property line of that we would, would come in and from that we'd work down at a two to one slope. And I know there were concerns raised, the level of the pit, the finished level of the pit that's proposed is really the level that we have coming in off the highway right now. We're not trying to take it deeper than that. There is groundwater that's an issue that's, that's in there already. There's no reason to try to dig a hole and build a lake, try to work around. So what we'll be doing is trying to lower the material that's above that, that floor that's already in there and work our way down through that. And I'm talking, it's, it's really a pit that's there at the rate that Bonner County would use it. It's a pit that's there for decades and many years would only be used occasionally when we're just doing some road repair in the area. And then specifically in the years, like we would probably use it this year, we'd probably use it next year, working on the roads in the Blanchard area and then not return to, to use in that pit for another three or couple, two or three years or something before we'd ever get back in there to run a construction project out of. But, and those would be for limited periods of time. One of the conditions is Milton's stated that we would be doing even without that would be the mag chloride to the pit surface just for dust suppression. We'll be doing that in anticipation of this when we're doing mags to the roads, so we'll be applying that fairly soon. The other thing I noticed was the water, there was a concern about wells and water in the neighborhood. So I've done some bit of research into the water that's out there. So the Blanchard area is actually the northern edge of the Rathrum aquifer. And when you look at the well logs that are in the area, you're looking at a consistency of, many of the wells are 120 feet deep and that's sort of the depth that's running through there. Where the, actually the, they figure the rough boundary of the Rathrum aquifer is somewhere around the Blanchard Elk Road. And as we go north toward this property, it becomes what's kind of referred to without a formal name as the Old Town Newport aquifer that flows down to the river. They're both robust aquifers. But that water that's in this area flows north and flows down through Old Town is, is a old town water sources out in that area as well and at Newport. So it's a robust aquifer. We're not going to be doing anything that would ever approach interfering with that. We just, our depth is, is the depth that we've got. The water's about 100 feet below the depth that we've got in that pit floor right now. And that's really the depth that we'll be going to. Another concern that I thought was a legitimate concern is the fencing insecurity. I know that we have and this plagues, I think, all of us that live anywhere in rural Bonner County, probably in rural Idaho, rural, anywhere in the west. That's ATV motorcycles. I don't know truly how you keep them out, but there is a commitment on Bonner County's part to increase and improve the security at the entry so that it, that is properly fenced and gated. Just eliminating the fact that people could have ready access to it right now. Shooting, that is, shooting is not permitted, is not condoned. It really and truly is trespass. We have to work on having that properly signed. Those are commitments that Bonner County is making. At which point if somebody's in there either with a motor vehicle or shooting in there, they are truly trespassing. And then it's really, those of you who are neighbors, simply calling the sheriff and seeing the sheriff will respond. But, but those are commitments that I, I have in discussions with the commissioners of things that we need to do just as neighbors. I used to be a politician and I can't talk longer, but I really believe that's the essence of the case. I will let you folks comment and I'll have the chance to rebut to that. I believe.
All right. So any questions, staff or?
One thing I saw in the comments was the hours of operation. Days a week, hours of operating. I don't know if you touched on that.
I did not. The hours of operation that are proposed and would be are 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That would typically be, we work four days a week, county road crews. Crusher coming in would be working five days a week. Those are without, you know, it's not a retail operation as the planning director said. So there'd be, those would be the hours of operation. Typically, when we're in there operating, it'd be four days a week.
And that's weekdays, not weekends.
Four weekdays, yes.
Steve, you're just making class two, class three base. Are you making sand also too for winter time?
Yes, we've actually, I think there was a comment on that about the use of this permit or this pit. We actually did go in and reclaimed, reject piles and made sand in 2019. So when we referred to the date of 2019, we were actually in there in 2019 and using that pit and screening sand. And, and what we found in, in that screening operation was we could not screen the sand there and transport it. We had better things to do with our crews and our trucks than trying to haul sand because it took up a good portion of what would have been a construction season trying to haul sand. And it just simply, when we looked at the cost of that material, when we took it to the places we needed it for other places, it was not economical. The sand will be screened this year for a number of, several years to come will be part of the crushing operation that's proposed for this year.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're. Okay, so we're gonna close that portion. So we're gonna Milton's putting the microphone. We'll start at the back row. We'll work around here. If you agree with someone, can just say I agree. Spend all night listening to the same. We have three minutes per person. Six, if somebody yields your time. State your name and address for the public record, please. And we'll start with this gentleman here and we'll just go down the road. So next, next person, okay? And lady, do you like to speak? Anybody in the back row wishing to speak? Okay.
Okay, so um I am not a politician, so I don't, I don't, my name is Kenneth Dewis and I live uh in Acre Estates at the top of the hill. And I have a couple of concerns and I hadn't planned on mentioning this, but I guess I consider rebuttal to what I heard. Uh, one is I'm not a, I'm not a geologist, but um, when I under, what I understand about the Rathrum aquifer, I'm gonna have to say that I'm at twenty eight hundred and fifty feet where I live. And understanding where the floor of the gravel pit is. And understanding, I believe that the aquifer is under that. My well is two hundred feet deep. I, I'm not sure if I believe that the blasting would not affect my area. It's a statement, not an argument. I'd just like you to ponder that. The other thing is that I would like to bring up is your sub area um plan for Southwest Bonner County. And I don't have the citation with me, but I, cause I, I wish I would have remembered exactly where it was in there, but and I don't know if you guys write it or who wrote it, but that plan has a statement in effect referring to in so many words, referring to the area from mile post twenty-two to mile post thirty, recognizing that it, in its essence, it's become a residential area. And that you're gonna try to maintain the quiet residential feel in, of the area. And um personally, I think this is more of an industrial site, been going to become an industrial site. And um as far as the gravel pit being there historically for decades. Yup, it has been there historically for decades, but when it was put in. I suspect none of us residents that are here now were here at the time. My point is, is it was very rural when it was developed as a gravel pit. It's no longer super rural. So, and also I, I don't know enough about this, but actually I think the area that you're gonna shoot is the area is the, well, it, it's both of your new, of your parcels that are shown in yellow and I don't, I don't see the yellow on here anymore. It's on a different slide. But you would be shooting actually from, through the bottom leg of that L. And then into the parcel to the east as well, not just to the north, because that's where the rock is. I think Mike Sexsmith, Sexsmith would agree with me on that. But um anyway, I have some concerns and my feeling is I kind, what we ran into before we wrote our letter is we saw nothing of a reclamation plan. And what you folks sent out. There was nothing about a reclamation plan. Um, the fact that it's just been submitted, if nothing else to me warrants our idea that this should be slowed down and not decided. In the very least, it shouldn't be decided yet and we need more time. Um, no reclamation plan, but here we are at a meeting to decide.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next row. Who wishes to speak? The front row. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Sexsmith. And I'm a little taller. My wife and I have the parcel immediately to the east of the area. That is the fifteen acre parcel. Um, to rebut the comments about the water table. Uh, we have a three hundred and ninety foot deep well. My static water level is forty feet. We're slightly higher in elevation, maybe ten, twenty feet than the floor of the gravel pit. Um, and in really dry summers. Our well will go dry for about two to four or five weeks. So the concern about the water is a big concern for my wife and I. Another thing that I wanted to address was when the first few letters arrived at the property owners immediately surrounding the yellow area. And we began speaking with our neighbors, as you can see. It became apparent very quickly that it appeared. I'm not saying it's true, but it appeared that the county did um intentionally try and limit that letter that was sent out to a very small amount of people, the ones immediately surrounding the area impacted by the yellow that was highlighted earlier. Most of the people in this room did not get that letter, but because people visit about concerns, there's a larger tendency here tonight than there probably would have been. I think it was sort of disingenuous on the part of the county to send out so few letters when the impact really is much larger than what the county may feel. So in the future, I, I would really recommend showing, you know, the ability of the county to exhibit more trust um to the part of, of the people that are being affected by plans like this. Rather than trying to limit the word out there to perhaps limit the objections to it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that. Our, the way the county code is set up, you've noticed in three hundred feet of property. The way the codes been set up for years. We're working on expanding the notice. It was, it was not intentional. It's just the way the law is written.
Which also it also, just adding to that, that I think the three hundred feet comes out of state code as the minimum notice and then the county code reflects that. But here in our meetings uh with the conplan update. We have been talking about a pretty substantial increase in that. Right, and we're, we're, we don't necessarily want to piece mill it in, we want it to be consistent.
There's an issue.
Yeah, it's not a, yeah, it is, but right now it's three hundred feet.
Okay, well, let's get this guy and then we'll come back over here.
Oh, sorry about that. I skipped over. Um, well, good evening, commissioners. My name is Silas Plan. I'm a resident in the area. I actually fall within the one uh mile ring that was drawn on one of the maps that was provided. I um feel that I actually am not disputing the comprehensive plan nor the zoning requirements. I, if that's the only part that we're discussing, obviously this falls within that. I can't argue that. What I can argue with and what I'm opposed to is the expansion of the gravel pit into those two additional parcels. I understand the county's necessity of developing this gravel. And it's reassuring to hear Mr. Class A that this is gonna be used for Blanchard area. Well, that's nice. I don't need it. I'm on a private road, but it's nice that the public roads will be maintained and I understand that need. What concerns me is that we're going to expand into those two large parcels that are drawn out on those maps. And then that expansion of that gravel pit is gonna have much more effect than the existing gravel pit that once upon a time used to be used there before some of us had so many homes in that area. And what I really would like to bring up is in the narrative statement on the conditional use permit. It says, how's the proposed use compatible with the adjoining land user? And in that statement, there's two of them. The two parcels border an existing permitted rock crushing pit, which has been in use for decades. As such, this use is very compatible in the area. I think that you all would probably find that maybe a little disagreeable if it was right next to your property at your house. You probably wouldn't agree with that. The second point is the greatest impact would be the adjacent residential parcels like Mike's. Which are already impacted by the noise from the existing pit. Again, I disagree with that statement. I think that that pit being that many acres over, when you look at that map there. That's not impacting Mike's property as much right now. When you expand that right up to his property line. And you expand it by two hundred percent and add a rock crushing unit into that. It's gonna impact all of us. And I hear Jake brakes and motorcycles revving on Highway forty-one and I'm a mile up the road because the acoustics of the valley caused that resonation of that sound and it flows right up there. I'm gonna have to listen five to six weeks sitting on my deck of my dream home, my retirement home that I just about done building. And I gotta listen to rock crusher for five to six weeks. Which five to six weeks? In the middle of the summer? Is it gonna be in the middle of summer when I'm trying to enjoy all my deck or is it in the middle of the winter when I've got all my windows closed? That has a, an important impact on this. We don't have those answers. What's my guarantee that this isn't gonna be developed into a larger operation? I understand it's not gonna be for retail, but what if other parts of the county need that sand? Now we're gonna increase the amount of use. I have no guarantees as a resident there and I'm impacted just like all the rest of us that are opposed. That's my statement, sir.
Hi, my name's Deborah Percival. I live on Hummingbird Lane in Blanchard. And one of the concerns I have, I used to be a truck driver. Oil, grease, everything comes off those trucks constantly. Fuel sometimes gets spilled. What are they gonna do to contain all that, to keep it out of the groundwater? And also we moved out here to get away from stuff like this. And it's, you know. It's sad that they're trying to develop and do all this and it really concerns us because I think it's going really quick. We've only been here a year and a half and there's been a ton of changes. And we feel that the commission probably needs to come out to Blanchard. I don't think any of you live out there, but the people that do live out there like me, my husband, we don't want it to change.
I'm Ron Fleck and this is my wife Maria. And I agree with what Silas said. Uh, we, I practice medicine down in Tri-Cities. We're trying to move like a lot of other people in the country, trying to move to Idaho. We love Idaho. And uh I believe that our property is in the triangular piece. I don't have a pointer, but it's the, the exact edge of where it's gonna expand to. I believe that prop, we're just getting ready to build another house on our foundation there. We started the shop. Ran out of funds. Now we're ready to do the house. And this is kind of like dream place for us to come. And I don't think we planned on having a rock crusher and a, and a sand, you know, all this before. We came here, I think it's going to devaluate all of the property around there, for sure. Uh, I understand like, like you said, like Silas said about the need for the county. I'm not disputing that. It sounds like it's a done deal already. It's already been approved. I don't know what we're even meeting here for it. It sounds like you already meet all the conditions, but maybe take into consideration that this is uh gonna affect a lot of our, the value of our property. I don't particularly want to hear a bunch of noise over there. Uh, you know, our, our property, that triangular piece is right exactly where it's gonna expand, where we're probably impacted more than anybody in this room. And so I'm opposed to to have an exp, I like, I don't know if it was Mr. Ruben Teskey that, that I actually met when he bought our property. I don't know if he, if he actually had that buffer zone. I think that was a good idea, whoever did that. And now they're taking away the buffer zone and there won't be any buffer zone. And now it's right next to our place. And so we're opposed to that. And I think everybody here that I've talked to. Not everybody, but they, we all have kind of the same feeling that it's not a a rural area like it was when the pit was initially made. So I hope that you'll reconsider this, at least delay it. And, and not railroad this thing any too fast. So thank you for listening.
Everybody in the second row?
Got one over on the other side.
We'll come back to you here in a minute, sir. We'll finish up here and then we'll come back over.
My name is Roger Brandt. Uh, I'm a little concerned about the turning lane on the highway. Is there any thing for a turning lane? Any positions? Because we've got a turning lane and we gotta get into estates. But there's no turning lane there.
Anybody else in second row? About the third row back there. Okay, sir.
Uh, actually, we have another person that was an integral part in creating that letter. She's got her hand raised the whole time. She would like to speak.
We'll, we'll get to this. Yes, we're gonna finish here and we're gonna move up there, so. Ma'am, you can stay there. It's, it's alright.
I speak loud enough. I think everybody can hear me, especially when I'm excited. My name's Kara Snyder. I am a lot five up in Acre Heights. I was one of those few people that did get a notification of this meeting, so I blasted it out to all the neighbors that had named them. In court. Um, one of the things I want to bring to everybody's attention. The additional use permit is based on the status of the existing pit. And we put numerous inquiries in. If that permit is actually, or that pit is actually permitted, you guys have not been able to provide that evidence. So that's the number one concern. If you're basing everything on a location that has no permit in place. So the other thing I wanted to bring up is um part of your code is that for a pit to be considered on the continuous use of a pit. Way agreed in twelve dash three forty-one dash eight dot one. Part of the requirement of this, if a pit is established before nineteen eighty-one and has been in continuous use December ninth, nineteen eighty-one. Is permitted and provided no additional land or being acquired for the expansion. A fourth thing, we've already said, it has not been in continuous use. And you guys are trying to expand on something that it hasn't been permitted and has not been in continuous use. The third thing I want to bring up is the fact that the existing pit does not lawfully comply with the non-conformant use of the land. As you've seen from the illustration, the existing pit encroached on those neighboring properties that were part of Ruben April original lives. That in itself is a violation of the code. So having said that. The fact that you're trying to enlarge or expand on a non-active, non-permitted, actual legal existing permit would be a clear violation of the Bonner County Code. Furthermore, through the words of Commissioner Don McDonald, following the Idaho Supreme Court overruling of the Sagal asphalt plant. Based on the language in the ruling of that particular litigation, it appears now every pit in Bonner County is illegal. So that's what I want to ask. You guys are in, what appears you're a violation of your own code and yet you want to expand on something? You can't quite provide evidence to be legal.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Roger Berry. I live on uh Peaceful Springs, just about directly east of there, quarter of a mile. Um, couple of things. One is when my wife and I drove all around the Northwest looking for a place to live. Um, a gravel pit operation was not high on the desirability list. Um, if it were operating and making a bunch of dust, that probably would have influenced what property I bought at the time. Uh, the other thing is I, I noticed when you were going through the slides. Uh, part of the code is uh, housekeeping will be performed in order to prevent a public nuisance. Um, I would assert to you that you cannot do enough housekeeping in that zone, that area to not be a public nuisance. Um, another thing is, is my wife has lung issues. Uh, whatever lung function she loses, she can't get back. So I've turned the whole house into a, an air cleaner. And particulate matter from a gravel pit, that's bad news. Thank you very much.
I'm Susan Dewis and I live in Acre Estates and um he very briefly put up the um section twelve four eighty-two of the mining code. And um I noticed that under B, um, talking about And I noticed that under B, talking about setbacks, it said that the mine area shall not be located closer to the nearest property line or public right-of-way than a horizontal distance equal to one and a half times the vertical depth of the mine area at any given point. So I believe on the full 86-page document that you sent out of the conditional use permit, it talks about the, the depth being 125 feet, I think, at the greatest depth where you're going into the east. And so if your setback is one and a half times that, that means you're going to stay away from that lot line, one and a half times 125 feet?
There was a second sentence.
That says, steeper slopes may be permitted where certified by an Idaho licensed engineer.
That's the end of that first sentence.
In no instance shall the actual mine area, well, that's like a catch-all. In no instance shall the actual mine area extend within 60 feet of the nearest property line? That's like the base. That's the way I read that. What, why are you saying that this doesn't apply, the one and a half times the depth? Why does that not apply?
This is opportunity for you to make public comment?
I, yeah.
Rebut, I'm not here to debate.
Will you rebut that tonight? So we get an answer to that?
All these, all these questions will be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bailey, fellow commissioners, I would like to state on the record, my name is Joe Champini. I live on Tower Mountain Road. I live above the gravel pit, a couple miles away, and I would like to echo what some of my neighbors said in terms of two issues. The first one would be acoustics. I can hear, as you said, sir, I can hear the Jake breaks. I hear them loud, as you hear going by here, and it's like a Roman amphitheater. The noise travels up the mountain, and as my neighbor said, you can hear everything. It has been a sanctuary. I've been there 13 years. It's been a sanctuary. It's extremely quiet. And as you said, sir, of those years from when you purchased it, when you acquired it in 2017, I know from those years, it was dormant, which is in violation of the code. So I think we need to address two things that I recommend. Number one is the noise level. I would like to hear some kind of an acoustics test done from the pit, see what the decibel reading is, and how that affects the neighbors. So that would be number one. Number two, one of my neighbors brought up was trafficability of 41. I've seen a huge, since the crash in '08, I've seen a huge increase when the economy started picking up about four years ago, of people migrating for the very reasons that my neighbors described. Desirability in the entire list, of which is the tenants of southwest Bonner County, dark skies, lack of noise, violation and pollution, the ruilability, the agricultural aspect, and furthermore, the fact that we've kind of towed the line down on that part to five-acre parcels, many ranches. This, we've never seen to this day a pink map with the industrial, because like you said, it's in the process of being permitted, but none of us knew if it wasn't for Mike Sexsmith. The 300, and I understand, sir, I'm not repeating, and I know I've only got three minutes, but I'm bringing my second point up about trafficability on Highway 41. That is an issue I would like to hear as part of the rebuttal. When they're going to increase the 300 feet, because Commissioner, you did say that, they're going to address that issue so that when issues affect the ruilability, the agricultural aspect of our community, which we all as neighbors here care about and would like to preserve, what's the chance of a leapfrog incident? Now we have an industrial toehold. What else on 41 is going to go industrial? And so it's notification of beyond 300 feet, something more reasonable, like say within a mile. Secondly, how is that going to impact the industrialization of the area? Secondly is on and off ramp. Somebody want to yield three minutes? Okay, okay. I'll keep it to 30 seconds. Second issue is the trafficability on and off, because you go down 95, it's class five on and off ramps. There's a way to get your speed up on 41, so these trucks are going to be heavy. I agree, turning in and out, that'll be a minor nuisance, because we all live right there, in a sense, other than the noise. We're talking 75 to 80 trucks per day. It's what your paper says. I'm not contesting that. That's what you have written to us, 75 to 80 trucks. So we're talking about turning on and going out and getting up to speed to get back on that road, which is already at that point, you're at about the one-mile marker of the 60 mile-an-hour zone. I would like to hear how that's going to be addressed, because trafficability, I would say paved road, and you're going to need something to get that speed up, so you don't impact all the people that are trying to get to work at peak hours that you're opening and closing. Go down 41 when you get to Blanchard and see what traffic is like now. It's not what it was in 2008, 2010. I could drive for 10 minutes when I first moved here and barely see one or two cars. Now everybody's got work out of Spokane Valley, out of Coeur d'Alene, everything's moving north. I bring that up for consideration. Thank you, sir, ma'am.
Okay, everybody, we're all down here? Okay? Jeannie, we have a list online.
Okay, can you, can I be heard? Yes. Hi, commissioners, staff, neighbors, my name is Alwyn Whitaker, and I am a property owner of three lots in Acre Estates. I believe that conditional use permit 720 should be denied based on the fact that the information prepared and distributed to the public was incomplete, inaccurate, and appears to be misleading. I will, I know we've given you the letter, and it obviously sounds like you've read it, so thank you very much. But I want to address the legal statements in the staff report this evening. Page one of the staff report states that the project is 8.34 acres. First of all, that's inaccurate. It's a, it's 34 acres. Page seven of the staff report states that no public comments had been received. Obviously, you did get it, but saying that nothing, we didn't say anything ahead of time is inaccurate and it's misleading. I'm going to address the three conclusions of law on page eight of the staff report. Conclusion one states that the proposed conditional use permit is in accordance with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. It is not. This is a proposed industrial-like use in a residentially zoned area, although it can be, I understand, a conditional use permit. But last year, you guys went through the process of the sub-area comprehensive plan, and not once was this mentioned. And I, I do believe that, that, that it should have been brought up. You've been talking about doing this for, since 2017, but you didn't bring it up at the appropriate time, and that's, that's the job of the commission. Conclusion two states, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with the mining code. However, both Ms. Dewis and also Milton, Ullerton pointed out that they use Chapter 12, Section 482, but that says that the reclamation plan shall accompany the conditional use permit. It did not. And I, I don't, I couldn't have read it if it wasn't there, and you said it, and then there was some, even tonight, people said it was maybe not approved yet. The roads department had said it wasn't approved yet. They're getting emails, but it's not approved. So I don't think there's a reclamation plan that shall. I work in a public entity, and there's a difference between shall and may, and shall does not mean maybe later when it's available. And so I think that this, this conclusion of law does not meet code because it's inaccurate. Conclusion state three states that the proposed use will not create a hazard. The fact is that the current pit is already a hazard that Bonner County has chosen to ignore. We've called the sheriff's department about the shooting. I mean, we've called the county risk department about the shooting, and what was told to me was call the sheriff's department. There's not a, it already is a hazard, so that's inaccurate. I think that if this application is approved, it would demonstrate that you, you don't adhere to your own code when it comes to your land, because this is Bonner County land. I think you have an extra duty to be, to follow your own code, and anything else would be a breach of public trust and public duty. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeannie?
No one else has.
Okay, so we'll close that. So we'll have rebuttal here in a minute, but I need to clear some things up. We don't, as this body here is planning a zoning commission, we don't bring the files, we don't dream this up, all these things. We're here to judge for the public, whether it's right or wrong, okay? The county brings it to us, or folks bring us something, we're the judge and the jury. So as long as you guys know that, and it goes on to the county commission. So, ma'am, let's do the code section stuff first, and then we'll let Mr. Blatt answer his question. So, and so we close public comment.
So several things that were mentioned. Yep, the, the acreage in the staff report was not correct, but it did list both parcels. So further, you'll note that the date of the staff report was equal 19. The date of the letter added to the file was equal 21st. So it was received after the staff report was written. That, that is a fact. It says that reclamation plan approval by Idaho Department of Land shall be applied for a copy of the application. So correct, when the application was taken in, this, this was not turned in at that time. It was just a matter of asking the road department for that. We have that. We're not here to approve that reclamation, Brad. We're not there to review it and make sure it's complete. We're not there to review it and make sure that they filled out and dotted all the i's and cross the t's. That's not our job. We added it to the file. We made it a condition that it be added to the file. That's what the ordinance required. It's there. They did submit a grading stormwater management plan. That was, that's also there. So this code was adopted in 2008. I don't know that there is a gravel pit in one of the counties that adheres to this, because these are new codes, and grandfathered means that they don't have to adhere to these codes. And so this, the setback issue is, is in the staff report, it's in the conditions, that the setbacks will meet the requirements of 12482B. So, and, and that explains how you meet those setbacks. There are some variations available. The applicant will be required to provide those if they vary from you, but it's there. That's the law. That's what we follow. So, um, we received no comment from Idaho Transportation Department. I assume that the road department has a relationship with them, and if there's going to be an increase to that turn lane, that, that their permit that they have with Idaho Transportation Department will be addressed. There were no comments received, so we couldn't, couldn't analyze or make any comment on, on the turnout. Apparently, ITD did not have a problem with it. When we send comments out to agencies and they choose not to respond, our assumption is, is that they do not have a problem with that application. We have no other way to know it than this. This is typical occasionally of a conditional use permit that, that, that the conditions added to the conditional use permit come from the standards in the code. They, they don't necessarily have to meet all of them at the beginning, but they get, they manage and watch throughout the process. Um. The application is for conditional use permit on these other two parcels, not the original. So that's what we're, that's what we reviewed, is we reviewed it for the two parcels that were applied for. This code is under review and will be addressed in future meetings, but nevertheless, it, as far as staff was concerned, there, there was no concern with this. The sub-area plans have been submitted to the planning commission for their review. We have added some staff to update the comprehensive plan, the county comprehensive plan. Our hope is that we will have something substantial to adopt by the end of the year. But those plans have not been adopted. It cannot be considered in this decision. We did not review them for this application because they have not been adopted. That's just the law. That's the way the law reads. I would, I would, I would ask the applicant and perhaps the commission to entertain adding a condition to this application that the CUP would be limited to the applicant of Bonner County, and that if Bonner County were to sell this property, that that conditional use permit would expire. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Steve Blatt, Road and Bridge Director, for the record, once again. Ma'am's suggestion that this permission will be, permit be issued to Bonner County and not to the property, I think is one that is agreeable to Bonner County. We bought this for the use of Bonner County, Bonner County roads. There was a question brought up, other Bonner County uses. I honestly cannot think of another applicable Bonner County use that this would supply any material to, but I think making this conditional permit specific to Bonner County and the sale of the property, because if we sold the property, many of the statements that I made about the use, the limited amount of use, and the limits on the impact to neighbors would be absolutely impossible. And so I, I think that's a condition that there is true merit to. There was a comment made on the unknown effects of blasting on a, on a neighboring well or nearby well. I think a condition could be added that if the operation of our blasting affected a neighboring well, that Bonner County would be responsible for correcting that impact. If it was an impact of blasting, I think that would be a condition that could be added that would be reasonable. Parcel to the east of Mr. Sexsmith, I think that he was talking about. So I know enough about aquifers, having a brother who was a hydraulic engineer and has been, I've been involved with hydro, the study of the aquifer several times, that the property that he's talking about is a rising rock edge that would become the edge and be slightly beyond the aquifer, and the rock, aquifer would actually be to the west and following the valley on the, by the valley, which is sort of right where his property is. which is sort of right where his property breaks away and the edge of this pit breaks away. That would explain why your wall would be deeper, is that you've actually moved beyond the edge of that aquifer. The expansion of the pit and the impacts on neighboring properties. I don't, I don't think we can deny or try to just say that's not going to happen. If we expand the pit and continue the use of the permit, there will be impacts. I think we were upfront about what those impacts, they will be extreme limits, because this is specific to Bonner County roads and is specific to the Blanchard area Bonner County roads. Just logistically, it's not feasible for us, we would buy material otherwise, we just simply cannot haul it out of the Blanchard area. Turning lane that is a concern. The safety of motorists and the safety of our trucks and accidents and preventing accidents. What we are likely to do is to improve at the edge of the right of way, a deceleration accommodation for our trucks for the safety of all that they can move out of the travel lane and improve and widen the access into so they're decelerating out of the lane of traffic. It would still probably be an ITD right of way, we do have a working relationship with ITD. We do have accidents that occur because we have some thirty pieces of rolling stock out on the roads most of the days of the summer, and they are a hazard for our operators, they are an expense to the county, and they are traumatic when other vehicles are involved. We are very excited about that. That is a concern that we have. Any of these issues, I just really have not qualified, they were either planning issues or issues that were beyond the noise level, I don't have a true decimal reading of crushing, and I can't respond to that one. I think my perspective is so much different than yours, and that is, I actually have, since I was a kid, liked gravel pits, and I like gravel, and I like crushers, and I, and so my perspective is just so much different. Impacts of noise, I've been in this county for sixty-five years, and I'm very familiar with the increase of traffic, the increase of noise, and the fact it's one of those things that we all live with, and Bonner County as a neighbor, it's incumbent upon Bonner County as a neighbor, it's part of our method of operation for the road department, that we be good neighbors. And there are, producing a gravel is an impact, we need to be a good neighbor at doing that and mitigate that to the fullest extent of our ability. I think that's incumbent upon us. The reclamation plan, just to straighten my record out, every indication and every email that we have indicates that we have approval sometime soon coming our way. There's no doubt about that, there are no flaws in our reclamation plan, and we have every indication it will be approved, it should be approved soon. So, we could not start any other operation. And then in the planning commission and the planning department's defense, if there was anybody that was remiss in not, they would not know of the road department's intent of expanding and operating a gravel pit, if we didn't notify them of that. Yes, I was aware that the Blanchard subarea plan was, had begun, I did not think that falls on me, I take you cannot put that on the planning commission. If anybody's remiss in that one, it was just me personally of just not notifying them that it was our plans, to try to open and expand that yet. So that one rests on me, and for that, I apologize. That is my rebuttal.
Mr. Glad, I got a couple questions for you. How many gravel pits in Blanchard?
County, county pits?
County pits?
County-owned pits?
Oh, none. This is our sole gravel pit in that area.
Number of pits for the county?
Bonner County is woefully inadequate, we own this is our most promising pit, if we can expand it. The other ones are very low quality or already mined out, we have one up out in the Bay Area, and we have one up in the Crowes Creek area. Those are basically both mined out, and the area of the mine that's in the Bay Area, it's not even, we've decided it's not even doing a record, it's just a marginal pit, not worth the operation.
Okay, last question, how many crushing operations will the county have this year?
We have three different crushing contracts, one is down in the Granite Hill in a mine there, of which we are trucking our rounds are an hour per truck. The other one we take, we have one of it, Priest River, excuse me, we do have a, we do have a pit on the Hootu Loop, off the Hoop Loop, we do have that, we have a pit there, I missed that one. But then we're crushing, we have a crushing contract in a pit that is up on Bodie Canyon, and we have one that is being, well, being crushed in Pack River and out in Woods Home Pit on Sully Road. So we have three different crushing contracts out.
And to clarify, this is talking to one of the crew members on a crushing outfit, when they set that plan up, they check for their noise and everything else as part of their safety.
Yes.
I think that might be part of DEQs.
They have to operate within the decimal ratings of DEQ at their, and noise levels of.
Any other questions to the applicant?
So, Steve, you know Highway forty-one, right there where the entrance is, what's the grade on the road?
Road will be flat and road will be straight.
So, you talked about potentially a deceleration lane approaching the site from the south. And loaded trucks coming out of there, I think that's, that's either in the fifty-five or sixty mile an hour zone.
Yeah.
I don't like other areas from the county. Acceleration to the north or to the south, it's hard to say, because you're not going to make an acceleration lane, south of there in the middle of the road. But a shoulder or a northbound acceleration lane.
Certainly a possibility, and if that's a condition of approval, then that's a condition of approval. And if, you know, the thing that, we're going to have to bring this back, if we're going to try to improve the deceleration, we then come back to, with ITD and opening the discussion box, because we are working in there right of way, and like any of you that work in our rights of way, we need an encroachment permit from ITD to do anything in there right of way as well.
Do you recall if that existing pit has a commercial encroachment permit? From ITD? Shane, is how it's?
Don, I'm just going with Commissioner Davis, I'm just going with the fact that it mostly, it must, because there was no comment on this conditional use permit.
Mike, conclusion as well. The well, the well impact that was talked about offering to cover or whatever, address a problem. I don't know how close we don't have in front of us, the water resources maps would be almost good location of wells on their, on their site, but in some cases, I don't know, say around, had that area, there's been well monitoring.
There is actually two monitoring wells that Water Resources has set up in the Blanchard area, one is just north of this off forty-one, and they monitor that one, there's another one that's set up on private property in Blanchard, and this is where they have the aquifer information and the directional flow of water, and the one that is set up in Blanchard, the water flows south, and the one that is set up on just north of this property, the water flows north, indicating there's a division in the two aquifers that are there, and they're both very robust. We have a commercial well drilled on this property, it is down at two hundred feet, but it produces over a hundred gallons a minute. Most of all the wells that are down in the floor that are touching into that Old Town Aquifer are all picking up ten gallons a minute or more. As Mr. Sexton says, you get up on the hill and you get into the hillside and the rock, you get away from the aquifer, then that are, that are up on the hillside?
There's one.
Right.
Drive us, drive us live.
Okay.
So what?
Yeah, we're
Well, okay.
We're not, we're not
And I, speaking about it, I did actually spend a fair amount of time learning about the aquifers that are there. When you start getting on the rock, going up the hill into the heights, you are getting above the floor of the aquifer and you're getting into the rock. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I've been told to shut up. Thank you, Milton.
Yeah, if you don't mind, there were just two more questions that got asked that I wanted to throw some input at. Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Road and Bridge Department. So, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Somebody had asked when crushing typically occurs in, throughout the year, and that could be typically between January and through June, is when we're putting out crushing contracts in late winter, and then the crushers, if they were in that pit, would be somewhere between January and June for that five to six week span that they were doing crushing, so it would not typically be throughout the middle of the summer when you want to be out on your decks, as the comments went. Another comment was about the one point five times the depth for the setback and that compared to the sixty foot setback. And I think in this case, the sixty foot setback controls, the way that I interpret that one point five depths times the horizontal distance, is that because our slopes to the pits are already proposed to be two to one, we're exceeding that setback requirement, whereas if we were proposing to have a vertical cliff cut out to the edges of our pits, then we would have to be one and a half times the distance, that vertical distance away from the property line, but with our two to one slope, we're already exceeding that, and so the sixty foot setback to the property lines would be the controlling condition.
That it, Milton?
That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Missioners, have any more questions?
No, any more questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks for bringing up the wells.
Thanks, thank you. You never know, you never know.
Hey, so we'll close that portion and we'll open it up to commissioners' deliberations, and then I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I'm trying to find traffic volumes. It's increased that much.
Okay.
Well.
I agree with the having the conditional use permit specific to Bonner County and not with the sale of the property. I said I agree with it being part of the conditional use permit, being part of Bonner County and not sold with the property.
Yeah.
I mean, the reality of it is that Bonner County is growing quickly, and Steve already does a pretty good job with what he has. The county needs more pits, not less, to accommodate growth. And the rural character comes with dust, logging, and Jake breaks. That's part of North Idaho. You might not hear a Jake break when you drive by at noon, but if you're, if you're on South in the Hootu Mountain, you probably hear quite a few log trucks coming down that south end a lot earlier in the morning. That's just part of living in North Idaho, this is not a quiet park setting. It's well, it's, it's not a quiet place. Well, I wish I lived next to you, because that would be nice.
Keep it to the group, please.
Sounds like this was kind of wide open space until it's grown up around the gravel pit.
Worse. Please, no comments from the audience anymore. This is a public hearing, and you saw the notice up there how it's conducted, like a court, if I was a judge, would be here right now. So, please. So
Well, the county runs on rock and sand. Yeah. I understand, I live on the busiest haul road in the county. And I see the county trucks, private trucks, log trucks seven days a week. Part of the fact that we knew what we were buying, we bought there seventeen years ago. And it's just gotten busier. It's why everybody moved here, because we're in rural America. But, you know, we're growing, and it is, it is what it is, but we have to, you know, have smart growth.
I know we've seen substantial growth in that area, more roads, more maintenance. I understand Steve's frustration too, in being able to serve while we're all for long ways. There's no other site even imaginable down there in that area, is there, Steve? I couldn't think of one.
You know, we are holding developers to build better roads, however, those roads get turned over to the public. Taken care of.
Oh, one. One part of this that is, in that sense, a redeeming value of it, this is a county pit, not a private pit. In that sense, like Steve said, limited operation.
No, that pit is serving the taxpayers. Fortunately, it's another not in my backyard, however, what about the rest of Blanchard? We need rock, along as other people. Yeah. Oh, let's see. Even some of the private pits are running out of material.
Yeah.
Pit is running out of materials.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, and
So if there is a motion to prove, we'll need to read all the conditions and add wells' conditions.
You need to read all the conditions. No, just any new?
Just the new.
Just any new.
Would be the two.
Well, two or whatever. I do have a question on condition A fourteen, which is the applicant shall install and maintain hazard fencing and signing to warn the mining danger. to the satisfaction of Bonner County Plan Department. I believe the application says, and Steve mentioned it, putting it at points where there has been trespassing. Uh does this imply the perimeter?
I, yeah, they would. They would not necessarily be required to fence the entire.
Yeah, I I.
And I don't know that uh if you read the comments from Idaho Fish and Game, that that would be the license.
Yeah, it does. There's always that. As we hear from them with subdivisions and everything else, that uh those subdivisions are tearing into the open nature of the terrain and habitat just in and of themselves with the residential lots and which doesn't always amount to anything. And the reclamation plan is under review by Idaho Department of Land. That will come about and be part of the conditional use permit. I think there should be a condition on the on the access to do something with uh deceleration lane. I'm thinking back to the to the uh solid waysite further down forty one, that ended up with turn lanes. Because of the cars and trucks, the garbage haulers and whatever going in and out of there, so. Probably should be part of this as well. Yeah, it'd be an essential condition.
I guess on on that one, if the highway department made a comment, but they usually don't comment unless it's an intersection that has prior issues.
Yeah, and so there'd be no, very little if any um activity at this one with, based on the record. And now it's it's got potential, but I don't know how it weighs against, for instance, a solid waysite is a daily daily thing with, I don't know how many. Uh yeah, I guess I'm thinking it's got a higher activity level than this one.
Only it take one accident to take a life.
Yeah, and if you run a a turning movement analysis for turn lanes, if the volume on the highway is such practically any turning movements warrant a turn lane. It's just the way it is, the numbers are there, so, and I don't know, I was trying to find on the ITD website just now uh what the volume is at that stretch on Highway forty one. And how much has increased over the last few years, but I couldn't find it quickly.
Question for you, Mo. Uh the idea of adding a condition in reverse to the wells, is that uh an assumption of possible implication of liability that needs to be reviewed by Bonner County Council?
Well, that, but if it's already assumed, right? I mean, if if there was, if it was caused, if damage to a well was caused by the county. I mean, people ask us to fix the windshields all the time. So. Similar fashion.
Well, yeah, back there. Pardon for search. Well, it's not. That's the trouble too. Are you guys still looking?
Yeah. So so the only challenge with that is that that it's hard to get that into the record. So, you know, doing some individual research during the hearing, probably not appropriate, because you can't get into the record.
It's not, right, it wasn't divulged beforehand and all that, so I I'm just trying to, at this point, satisfy my mind, but but um I I think it would be, like I said, my experience with with traffic, the the numbers may well be there, and I think it would be an appropriate condition to talk about a deceleration lane.
I think I have the equipment to help put that in.
Yeah, they probably do, and you know, it's it's one thing when you're making a uh a left-hand turn off of a highway and cars come up behind you at speed. They pretty much have to stop or go around if they can on the shoulder. When somebody's decelerating in a travel lane to make a right-hand turn, people will pass into the oncoming cars, oncoming lane, so it's inherently more more dangerous. Uh which is why just remove that vehicle from the traffic stream as as much as possible, let them slow down. There is good sites since that dislocation, and I'm aware of that, and the grade is not excessive by any means, so. And it would be right end and uh machine work and material is there, so. All right.
So a condition, something like the applicant shall work with ITD to install a deceleration lane as appropriate or?
I think that would be uh appropriate wording. So, yes, one, the suggested uh which would be A sixteen condition of approval for the conditional use permit not to run with the land, but to be, I want to word that.
It'll be granted only to Bonner County and sale of the property will expire the permit upon closure of the sale.
Something relative to the potential, or if there is impact on a neighboring well. I don't know if that, is that just covered by tort liability for the county or, okay? It would take a claim on the part of the well owner, but it's a tort claim, so. Okay, so that gives us two two additional conditions. Okay, then. Well, I a lot of the things that were raised, the noticing, uh except we're working on that, we're not there yet. The uh the discussions put forth by the Southwest County Committee, uh those have been presented to this this commission. We have not acted on them yet. We're going to try to act on all five committees roughly the same time as well as the rest of the county that's not included in those five sub areas. A daunting task. But somewhere in the next few months, we hope to get there. No, eh we cannot bring that in, it's just not. We haven't fully considered that yet, so. So.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Bradish, I move to approve this file CUP zero 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 seven dash two one for rock crushing operation and amenities, finding that it is in accord with the general specific objectives of the Barn County Conference of Plan and Barn County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. To further move to fall, adopt the following findings of facts and con- conclusions of law as written, adding A sixteen, which would reference.
He's got him written.
Adding A sixteen, the conditional use permit shall be the conditional use permit shall be granted only to Bonner County and the sale of the property will expire the permit upon closure of the sale. And A seventeen, the applicant shall work with IDT to install a deceleration lane as appropriate of the northbound lane.
Eh I can say that in northbound deceleration lane. I mean, that's that's the only practical deceleration lane there would be, but yeah.
The action, the action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the condition of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
Commissioner Bradish has made a motion to approve conditional use permit zero 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 seven dash two one Rebel Pit Rock Crushing, Bonner County. For a second.
Commissioner Lawson, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay.
Would you explain the appeal process?
Did you explain the appeal process to the public, please? Right, so if conditional use permits approved at the planning is only at the planning commission level, if there is a decision to appeal, staff would need to receive a letter of appeal uh with the fees attached, and it would be set for public hearing with the Bonner County Commissioners. Thank you. Seven ten, uh next file is conditional use permit zero 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 eight dash two one. Communications Tower of Vista is requesting to expand its microwave capability in and out of Baldi Mountain with the installation of a sixty-foot self-supporting self. Self-supporting wireless communications tower occupying occupying a thirty-foot by sixty-foot location on parcel number RP five eight November zero three west three five zero zero one alpha. Property is owned at Forest twenty. Project is located off Forest Road twenty six zero one in Portina Section thirty-five, Township fifty-eight North Range Three West Boise Meridian.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Swati, Bonner County.
Yes.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bradish. Uh I'm a forester for the Idaho Department of Lands. And um I had communications with the area manager about this file because the state did not receive notification on this. So I'm going to recuse myself because I know for a fact that it's not the public right of way as stated on the application, nor is it in or recorded these months over ideal, so I'm going to recuse myself for this one.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Swati from Bonner County Planning Department. This file is CUP eight twenty-one. It is a request for a conditional use permit for a communications tower. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow them to build a, to build the following facilities on a side zone agricultural forestry twenty, a sixty-foot high communication star, a control building with a vestibule, a propane tank, and a six-feet-high cyclone fence. The intent of the proposal is to improve two-way communication of field crews in areas currently out of radio service. The applicant is expecting to start the construction around summer, summer or fall of twenty twenty-one, and it may be continued to summer of twenty twenty-two, depending on the weather conditions. They are expecting to have one or two employees on site per month for inspection purposes. The facility is is expected to be operative twenty-four hours a day and three sixty-five days a year. During the construction phase, multiple visits are likely to be made, and one or two construction vehicles are likely to be present on the site. The applicant intends to provide parking in the approach of the access road as well as at the subject property. The lighting plans are likely to be limited to outside lighting for inspection and maintenance for uh maintenance of the facility. The subject site is around five sixty acres of unplanted land accessed by Baldi Mountain Road. It is currently developed with a communications tower that was built in two thousand and six and a radio tower and equipment shelter that was built in nineteen ninety two and nineteen ninety-five respectively. The current zoning for the property is AF twenty, and the comprehensive land use map designates this property for prime agricultural forest land uses. Majority of the site contains mapped slopes over thirty percent, which are generally considered unsuitable for residential purposes. The site does not have the presence of any mapped wet wetlands, and uh it does show the presence of Little Sand Creek um on the southeast portion. Currently, there are no water, sewer, or fire services present on the site, nor is intended to be provided in the future. The applicant intends to provide a temporary portable bathroom during the construction phase of the project. The uh surrounding properties are mostly zone forest forty or agricultural forest forestry twenty. The site plan was provided by the applicant. These are the tower elevations, which shows a sixty-foot high tower, um and it shows sixty feet uh in width as well. These stormwater and grading plans were submitted by the applicant, which have been uh prepared and stamped by a professional engineer. The communications tower is proposed to be located at least sixty feet uh away from all property lines, not posing a safety threat to any other properties around. The project also proposes to build build a six-feet-high fence around the tower and its attendant facilities as required by the code. The proposed location is accessed by Baldi Mountain Road designated as a local road by the Bonner County Road Department. The code also promotes co-location of, sorry. The code also promotes co-location of communication towers. The new tower is proposed to be built on a property where a communication tower, a radio tower, and an equipment shuttle already exist. The tower will be built to meet the standards of Telecommunication Industry Association, Electronic Industry Association, as well as suffice any applicable federal requirements. A stormwater and grading plan has been submitted by the applicant, prepared and stamped by a professional engineer licensed by the State of Idaho. The applicant has not proposed any signage, symbols, flags, banners, or other devices for the purpose of displaying any messages of any kind in the drawing submitted for the proposed project. And as per the code, there are no specific parking requirements described for communication towers. However, the applicant does intend to provide parking in the approach of the access road as well as the subject site. With that, staff recommends approval of this request. I can now take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, the staff? Hearing as the Vista's representative?
Um.
Go ahead.
Wait a minute, I got one. Relative to the staff report.
Okay.
You got one online? Okay. Um but this is a question, I gotta make sure I want the right one. Um looking in the staff report and the condition of approval. Mission A six, is that? Is that appropriate?
No, it's it's not. It's not related to a project.
Yeah, so we need to strike.
Oh, that needs to take the taken out.
Strike A six, I believe.
That's right. It's not related to the.
Yeah, it's.
Apologize for that.
One of those holdovers from word processing. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are you done, Don?
Yes, thank you.
Is this time to go off? Go ahead, Todd.
Hello, planning commission members. Thanks for for listening to this project tonight um and for staying so late. I appreciate the time. So I am the environmental permitter, cultural resource compliance and avian program person for Vista. Um in my role, I handle a lot of the land use permit requirements, and that's where these conditional use permits usually play into into my my game. So I am not an engineer, so I also have an engineer on the call, hopefully, and he'll raise his hand if he gets, we have any technical questions about the tower construction, the building construction, any uh permits that are going to be taken out. to be taken out if this gets approved as a CUP. So I did work with Soul Engineering for the grading and stormwater plan. Part of that plan, you'll notice that there is a retaining wall section, and we're going to contract with Soul Engineering for the retaining wall design. It's going to exceed the four feet, so we'll likely come and see the county for a building permit on that one. So there's going to be quite a few building permits that are associated with this project, too. So this is, this is, we have an existing tower and building there that is going to remain in service while we construct the new one. And after we get the new one online, that existing building and facility will be donated to KSBS for their use. That's kind of going through our legal department on the correct way to do that. So but it is a tower farm up there. I'm not sure any of the commission members have been up there, but it's, the view is amazing, and it is really set up for, for multiple communication towers for private companies, for public companies, and it's nice that they have planned for these types of mountaintops to have all the units in one spot rather than all across the landscape. So that's what we really like to do is kind of stay within that same footprint of that tower farm and utilize the access road and the electricity that's already up there. So if, like I said, if you had any technical questions, we have Paulo on, I think is on the call still, and if there's anything that comes up, I can refer to him.
Thank you. Any questions, Vista staff? Any, is there? Thank you. As well. Questions? Anybody in the audience would like to speak? Are you Anne? She'd go first, and then you can speak. Go ahead.
Yeah, we should move the microphone again. Yeah.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Eha. I'm a resident of Bonner County in Sandpoint. I live off Woodview Road, off Baldi Mountain Road. And I definitely want to start by saying how much I appreciate the work you guys do here in this time of unprecedented growth in this area. It's intense. I can't, I can't imagine being in a new position. And so I want to say how much I appreciate it. And I do know that it's, in this time of unprecedented growth, it's a priority to preserve and protect our wild and rural way of life, a way of life that adds to our health and well-being in this county. This added wireless communication tower, when we already have two, and sixty-five antennas within a three-mile radius of Baldi Mountain, I believe undermines this priority. Let me just get my notes here. So doing some research on radiation, an Australian study found that children living near TV and FM broadcast towers emit similar radiation to cell towers, develop leukemia at three times rate of children living over seven miles away. Cancer rates more than tripled among people living within four hundred meters of cellphone towers or antennas. That's a German study. And those within one hundred meters were exposed to radiation at one hundred times normal levels. An Israeli study found that risk of cancer quadrupled among people living within three hundred and fifty meters of a cellphone transmitter, and seven out of eight of those cancer victims were women. This being said, we can also assume that our wild forest that is also full of life in this ag forest area is also impacted. I do understand that there is already existing towers there, and with additional towers, we can just add to that radiation rate that is being emitted from this area. And though it is rural, and though there are not residences around here, it is still impacting our area and those who live in a radius around it. I want to ask with these questions that if this is just to improve two-way communication between forest crews, why not a ham radio? Can that be used instead of an additional tower? And why do we need a new one? I would like a Vista to answer that if we already have these here. I don't believe that the threat of cancer and radiation is worth the rent money that the county receives from these private and public companies for this land. I definitely urge you to deny this application for the health risks it poses. And let's not add to the problem. Let's choose regeneration over degradation as we move forward towards sustainable economic growth by being a place that puts health of people, land, and animals first, and the rural and wild way of life, why we all love to be here, really. So thank you very much for your time and effort in this and everything else you're doing right now.
My name's Anne Wilder. I live at, on Primrose Lane in Priest River. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I oppose approving the Vista Baldi Mountain wireless communication facility until a NEPA review has been completed as required by law. In the staff report, it said the applicant will suffice any applicable federal requirements. According to the August ninth, twenty nineteen, United Kitoa plus FCC case number eighteen dash one one two nine, the three top NEPA specializing attorneys at FCC stated, every new wireless telecommunication facility must undergo a NEPA review, and WTF applications cannot be batched for such a purpose. According to Federal Communications Commission Order eighteen thirty, note that all microwave radiation wireless communication facilities are, applications are incomplete if the application lacks a federal environmental assessment, which is a EA, or environmental impact statement, and EIS is required under the National Environmental Policy Act, the NEPA of nineteen sixty-nine, says, "Congress enacted NEPA to encourage productive and enjoyable harmony between man and his environment, and promotes efforts which will prevent or eliminate damage to the environment and biosphere, and stimulate the health and welfare of man, among other purposes." That's Title forty-two, USC, number four three two one. Please inform all, any and all applicants and potential applicants of their need to comply with NEPA per the above cited rulings, and place the results of the federal EAS into the public record, and then notify us once it's been done. I have expressed no mere matter of concern, but solely matters of substance, of fact, and law." Thank you.
Prove public comment and open it up for yeah, Vista, do you want to respond to that? And are you still online? Their engineer still there?
Yes.
Well, you want to
Hello, can you hear me?
There he goes.
Okay, so I guess we need to clarify this. You're replacing an existing repeater station for field crews, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So basically, you're upgrading the equipment, and you're upgrading your tower.
Yes, so the main purpose of the reason we need the new tower is that we had a professional tower engineer firm, Northwest Tower Engineering, provide us a load study on our current tower. And our current tower is basically at its capacity. We have additional radios that we would like to, at some point in the future, put on there for some of our midline devices, and those antennas would have overloaded our tower. So looking at that, the tower regulations have changed over the years, and they've become more stringent. And so the TIA two 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 H specifications that we design our towers to, or have our third-party contractor designer towers to, there is not any upgrades that we can actually do to that tower to keep it from being overloaded with additional antennas. This project in particular is not putting any new radios on the, the, the mountaintop. It's replacing radios that are there. So we're not, we're not adding additional spectrum or additional electromagnetic waves coming off of, coming off of the mountain. What we're doing is we're moving them from one facility to another facility at this point. And anything in the future would have to be approved by the city of Sandpoint as far as what equipment we have in our shelter, because that's who our lease at this point is going to be with.
Okay, so there's no wireless cellphone stuff going up on the tower.
So what's going up on the tower? So currently, we have two point-to-point microwave links. So one high-speed link goes up to Mount Spokane, and then one goes down to our office there in Sandpoint. So there's a little tiny, like a forty-foot monopole behind our office that has a six-foot dish that points up to Sandpoint, Baldi. Up at Sandpoint, Baldi, we also have a two-way radio antenna. So we have a twenty-foot-tall four-bipole antenna for our two-way radio system. And that's a, that's a private system that we purchased private spectrum from the FCC to have our own private infrastructure and our own private two-way radio system. So those are the, those are basically the two radios, or three radio systems that are up there at this point, is a two-way radio system on the two-twenty megahertz frequency spectrum, and two six-gigahertz point-to-point links, one going to Mount Spokane and one going to Sandpoint.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I think that clarifies this. So I was trying to look on the applica, oh, no, I don't have the application.
Winds, the winds up there twice is what we have here, not more.
I understand the wind.
Tower won't take the share anymore.
Yeah, I understand the wind load.
Okay, Todd, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, those are great comments, and I appreciate the audience members voicing those opinions. So regarding NEPA, I will look into what the FCC requires us to do as an applicant to satisfy NEPA. I will look to see if it is potentially a category exclusion rather than a full EIS or environmental assessment, depending on what their thresholds are to push us into an EIS or an EA-type process. But we'll work with that federal agency to make sure that we're compliant with NEPA if it's necessary. I'll work with our network engineer and communication engineer folks to see. They actually submit those permits to the FCC and get that final decision back from that federal agency. And if that's necessary, we can provide that information. And then as far as electromagnetic magnetic frequency, we will meet the SEC standards that are set in the Code of Federal Regulations. So hopefully, that will satisfy that requirement at the local level, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any other questions?
What was the comment about donating existing?
Public comments?
No public comment. Okay, that's up to Vista.
You were clarifying whether it's going to replace what's existing, but then he said that what's existing, donated to the KSBS.
That's up to their corporation to donate it or demolish the antenna. So that doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with what we're deciding tonight. That's between two corporations. Okay, so is done discussing?
With the applicant, yeah.
The applicant's done, so we'll close that.
All right.
We'll look at a motion to approve, deny, or continue.
Didn't Commissioner Bradish mention something about access?
Well, access is Baldi Mountain Road. But there's
The site is, I think the property is owned by the city of Sandpoint.
City of Sandpoint.
So they're
Sixty.
They're the ones who would get any lease money, not the county. He has no portion of ownership here.
Commissioner Glasso, I motion to approve. I move to approve this file, CUP zero 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 eight dash two one, requesting to allow a communications tower in its attendant facility on a property zone agricultural forestry twenty district AF twenty, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based on the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was repaired and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt and the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written, and amending A six to be stricken from the conditions. The action that should be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not take, does not result in taking of private property.
Commissioner Glasso has made a motion to approve conditional use permit zero 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 eight dash two one, Communications Tower of Vista. Is there a second?
Commissioner Frankenbacher, second.
Commissioner Frankenbacher, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's stand up for about five minutes and stretch out.
Yes, yes. Sorry.
Okay. Did you wrap all of Sam?
Time for a snack. Slide the piece of the puzzle right underneath.
But the other thing is, nothing's here that's micro. Nice job. That was your first file, right? Yeah, you did. They're hiding in the hallway.
There's soda in the fridge? You didn't tell me that. I put my shoes back on. My love, these little curtains in here.
Yeah, we'll go a couple more minutes.
Yeah, you fix last.
Bring those babies back in here, that's annoying.
There you go. Right. There you go. That works. These guys are just kicking it here. Ooh, I, not these guys. You know, it's so ironic. I got, I got an email today to Revelation Land from ITB. They weren't the ones for downstairs, for I D L. That's the first time that I've ever seen this come to me. That's the first time that I've ever seen this come to me.
But he's doing a microwave link across the lake to the whole area, to his tower.
Hey, Jeannie. Okay, so we're back online, and our next file is in seven forty-four. We're going to look at a special use permit temporary batch plant Granite Hill LLC, SUP 0001-21. The file is requesting administrative temporary special use permit within the existing Granite Hill Rock Pit, which is located on about thirty-five miles, thirty-five point five miles acres, I'm thinking it's south of along Old Highway ninety-five in Granite Loop Road. The property is Zone Rule Five. Project is located off Highway ninety-five, section twenty-six, township fifty-four north, range three west, Boise Meridian. Go ahead, Jason Johnson.
Thank you, commissioners. This is Jason Johnson with Bonner County Planning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, as previously mentioned, we're looking at a special use permit for a temporary asphalt batch plant today. I won't restate what was just stated into the record there. It's there on the screen for you. Here we have a site plan provided by the applicant that shows.
For a second, any conflicts? Nope. I think so. We got a gas anyway. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jason. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Here we have the, an aerial representation presented by the applicant in the application showing the approximate location of the temporary batch plant on the site. That's towards the south end there, and then the dates on the screen show the dates that the noticing was done for this application. Access to the site is provided via Granite Loop Road and Highway ninety-five. The application said that primarily the Granite Loop Road access will be used for the asphalt batches. I added in Highway ninety-five there. That wasn't in the application, but when I look at the aerial photo, it does look like there's some access from ninety-five. But the intent of the applicant is to primarily use Granite Loop Road for the asphalt batch plant. Here we have representations of the zoning and the land use designation of the site on the screen. On the left, the zoning, the light blue area means rural five zoning. And the land use designation is rural residential there on the right-hand side of the dark blue. Here we have representation of some of the environmental features in the area. Really, the only environmental features that touch the site are some steep slopes in the far north and far south of the site. These, this is a soil representation, NRCS soils map for the site. The bright, I guess, sort of bright bluish-greenish area is labeled as soils that are farmlands of statewide importance. I don't know how important they are now that a lot of them have been removed for the gravel pit. But that's a standard part of the application we like to include usually. As previously stated, the main environmental factor on this site is the mapped steep slopes. No wetlands, water bodies, watercourses, flood plain. The site is partly vegetated in the middle, and there is some farmland of statewide importance, but not all of the site. This is a listing of all the agencies that were noticed about this application. We didn't receive a lot of response. Department of Environmental Quality sent us the same standard five-page comment sheet that they send us on every application. DEQ does not review projects on a project-specific basis. All the other agencies either replied no comment or did not reply, and we received no public notice or comments on this file. The site is rural five zoning, surrounded by rural five zoning. There's one single-family residence on a lot to the west. No stormwater management plan was included in this application because it's a special use permit. They're not always required. A condition is being added, we'll talk about it later, that a stormwater management plan is being required for the proposed use in this case. The special use code allows us to do that. We'll get to that more in the conditions. Okay, so getting into the meat of the application here, we're going through the standards review for a special use permit. A lot of the standards, although they are different standards, are addressed in the same way. So there's going to be some repetition here through the standards, but we'll just start going through them here. The first standard we're looking at is that the type of temporary use proposed, its general location, and the characteristics of the specific site are compatible with the nature of the district and will not have material and long-term negative effects. As shown on the submitted site plan, this site does have sufficient space for the proposed use. Characteristics of a temporary batch plant are compatible with the nature and characteristics of a gravel pit. And of course, locating the batch plant in the gravel pit will reduce the vehicle trips generated by the batch plant. Condition has been added that the batch plant shall be removed from the site and that the site shall be restored or predevelopment condition by the end of 2023. The next standard is that we need sufficient land area to accommodate the proposed special use. And that the temporary use in any pertinent structures are arranged on the land to minimize the adverse effects on surrounding properties and will not create particular hazards to adjacent properties. As previously stated, we do appear to have enough space for the proposed use. The batch plant in the gravel pit appear to be compatible in both nature and characteristics. We're reducing vehicle trips generated by locating the batch plant within the gravel pit. The batch plant will be regulated and fully permitted by Department of Environmental Quality for the purpose of reducing and monitoring smokestack emissions, odor, dust, and particulate matter. Plant will utilize best available control technology as required by local and federal regulations. Any Highway ninety-five accesses will be permitted by Idaho Department of Transportation. Granite Loop access will be permitted by Bonner County Road and Bridge. The site has service from Selkirk Fire District, who made no comment on this application. The site is within the Bonner County Ambulance District. Any temporary sewage disposal facilities that might be needed, a condition's been added that they be permitted through Panhandle Health. Of course, the stamped stormwater plan that I previously spoke about. And the facility is proposed to operate over a period of two years, beginning at the startup date of the facility. The next design or standard review is that the design and management of the proposed special use will not propose a material risk to public health and safety. As previously stated, we're looking at DEQ permitting for the site, best available control technology. ITD and Bonner County Road and Bridge permitting for any accesses. Fire District is present, ambulance district is present, Panhandle Health permitting any temporary sewage disposal facilities. And of course, the stamped stormwater plan. The next standard of review is that adequate public services exist or will be provided to serve the proposed special use. We've already covered this in the previous requirements, but we'll look at them again here. All the accesses will be permitted by IDT and Bonner County Road and Bridge as appropriate. We have fire and ambulance service and any sewage disposal facilities that may be needed permitted through Panhandle Health District. The next standard is that site plan and accompanying descriptive material for the special use are sufficiently detailed to provide a clear and unambiguous description of the nature and use to be allowed under the terms of the special use permit. That's the opinion of staff that the standard has been met. They've even given the model number of the batch plant that they're going to be using, or the model type rather of the batch plant they plan on using. This is a special use permit for the batch plant to be located within the Granite Hill Rock Pit. About a thirty-five-and-a-half acre site along Highway ninety-five and Granite Loop. They've given us clear dates for starting and ending the operation as well as a clear time range for when site restoration is scheduled to occur. The next standard of review, measures can and will be taken to mitigate any adverse effects that the proposed special use may have. Once again, as previously stated, we're looking at DEQ permitting for smokestack emissions, odor, dust, and particulate matter control. Best available control technology being utilized on the plant throughout its life. ITD and Bonner County Road and Bridge permitting for transportation access. We have fire district, ambulance service, sewage disposal if needed permitted through Panhandle Health. And also the stamped stormwater management and erosion control plan that we're going to require. Getting into the conditions of approval, these first conditions of approval probably look pretty familiar. They're the standard conditions of approval that we would put on most conditional use permits. Just ensuring that we operate with the approved site plan in mind, staying consistent with it. The special use permit can't supersede any deed restrictions. We still have to meet all county setbacks. The special use permit will expire subject to the dates and conditions given inside the staff report. A condition about temporary and permanent erosion control, dust control. Getting into conditions A six and above, these are more specialized for this particular use. Staff recommends a condition that the commercial operation of the proposed batch plant should end by the first quarter of 2023. This is beyond the date range that they gave in the application, so it should give them plenty of time. And that removal of batch plant in condition A seven should be concluded prior to the start of 2024. They were planning on removing spring, summer, sometime in there of 2023, so it should give them plenty of time. Condition of A eight, just emphasizing as a condition that during the life of the use, that Idaho Department of Environmental Quality standards shall be followed and that the plant shall be operated in full compliance with all of their requirements, including but not limited to regulations governing odor, dust, and particulate matter. Condition A nine. If you're going to access on Highway ninety-five, you'll need a department, or Idaho Department of Transportation permit. Condition A ten, same kind of condition, except the Granite Loop access requiring the applicant get a Bonner County Road and Bridge access permit. Temporary sewage disposal facilities were not mentioned in the application, but on the event that we need to locate porta-potties or whatever at the site for some reason, a condition that they should be permitted through Panhandle Health. The application already stated an intent to use best available control technology, but that has been added in as a condition as well. And then two conditions prior to issuance, first, that prior to commencing the proposed use, we need an engineered and stamped stormwater management and erosion control plan needs to be prepared consistent with twelve dash seven-two-four-point-one in our code. Should take into account the full impact of the proposed use. This needs to be submitted to the planning department before they get started. And then condition B two, subsequent or pursuant to section BRC twelve dash two-four-six M. The applicant needs to obtain and maintain enforced liability insurance, ensuring Bonner County against claims of liability resulting from the issuance of this special use permit. Will need a copy of that insurance policy prior to issuance of this permit. In conclusion, with the conditions of approval, this proposal looks like it will meet the standards of BCRC twelve dash two-four-five for special use. And therefore, staff recommends approval of this request for a special use permit for a temporary batch plant within the Granite Hill Rock Pit along Highway, old Highway ninety-five and Granite Loop Road.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions of staff? Hearing none, who's going to speak? The engineer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Steve Circle, and I'm a tri-state consultant engineer. Address is one-one-three-five-eight North Government Way. I'm here representing on behalf of Interstate Concrete asphalt. Jason Johnson?
Yeah, sorry. We're here to answer your technical questions you might have. We have read through staff report, and of course, per for you to get along with you guys as Jason is going to find John presenting. And we don't have any issues with the conditions, and I think that it's a logical location for us to put a plan in for what's coming in the future in that area. So it's a better test to have this plant operational there. One thing that I just want to state, and it's in our narrative, but we're planning placing a GEN Core four hundred per per hour drum asphalt plant. With, of course, the full BACT, we've got to be in full appliance with DEQ and whatnot. So we have no issues, no concerns about being able to do that. Done fast, and we'll continue to do it. So Interstate's been a good neighbor here in Sandpoint. And as you all know, it's all over county and the west. So I would stand for any questions you may have of us.
That's all right. So you said it's for. That's all right. So you said it's for ongoing. Can you explain why we're going through this? Why the plan is being put there? Yeah. For what project and?
Jared, could Jared get an answer more serious?
Can do that. Just for the general public.
Yeah. It's gonna be, that'll get on the.
As Steve stated, um, Jared Weiss, General Manager Interstate Concrete and Asphalt. Uh, the intent of this plant is to, um, the initial intent of this plant is to move in and partner with the existing gravel owners and uh, bid on the ITD project that is now ongoing. Granite Hill North, I believe, is close to the technical name. And that's the purpose of this plant, being right next to that project. And that's why it's a, a temporary approach and um, we went along this procedure for that reason. So to be, to be able to do that and build that project out of that source and limit the truck traffic immensely.
So is everything there except for reclaimed asphalt to, to make this all work? Sands, make the sand there?
Yeah, the, the, the site.
Has everything?
Yep, very sufficient for the process.
It's a safety issue to keep those trucks on the highway.
Significant, uh, minimizing trucks, truck traffic, so.
Sure, it's relevant, but do you have a subcontract with the athlete at this point or?
Correct.
You do? Okay. That sort of draws it together.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Hey. Nothing online? Anybody wish to speak about this file? Okay, we'll move on to commissioners deliberations then. For a motion to approve, deny, or continue.
Well. The future is here.
Future is here. Hot asphalt to put down on the ground.
I can't remember if you asked for conflicts of interest or not on this one.
I did start.
Did. Oh, that's right. You did. I, I guess I didn't speak up, but I, um, I got a crow a little bit. I started this blooming project in two thousand and three. Uh, to get that road widened before lane divided, so. I, I, I don't know if I should recuse myself or not, but I still think I can make a fair.
I, I think, I, I think you're okay.
Commissioner Bradish, I move to approve, I move to approve this project file S U two zero 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 one dash two one, requesting a special use permit for a temporary batch plant within the existing Granite Hill Rock Pit, finding that it is in accord with the general specific objectives of the Bonner County Conference of Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated at the following clause and based upon evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of facts and conclusions as written. The action that can be taken to obtain this conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval. I adopted this action does not result in a taking of.
Commissioner Bradish has made a motion to approve special use permit zero 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 one dash two one temporary blend batch plant Granite Hill. Is there a second?
Commissioner Reed, I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Carry on, carry on. Always fun to see these things come into fruition. Don't always get to see that, but boy, it's a blast.
Okay, it's uh, right at eight o'clock. Move on to next file is V zero 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 five dash two one variance, lot size minimum. Elliot Grant is requesting a lot size minimum variance to divide thirteen point six seven acre parcel into two parcels. The first parcel will be seven point nine seven acres and the second parcel will be five point seven acres where ten acres is required. Lot size minimum variance will create one parcel for each of the existing homes already situated on the property. Parcel is own Ag Forest ten. Project is located off Juneberry Lane in section twenty-six, township fifty-five north, range four west, Boise, Meridia.
Sorry, I lost that up.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you, commissioners for being here today.
Mr. Hang on just a sec. Any conflict of interest?
No.
Nope.
Now we're good. Now we're good.
Evening, commissioners. Thanks for being here tonight.
You've only been here two weeks. You already screwed up.
Thank you for being here, members of the public. I'm going to start reading a statement that the applicant had submitted with the application. Following it and, and then we'll get into the presentation. So, and this is kind of to you, planning and zoning committee. So to the Bonner County Planning and Zoning Committee, I thank you very much for your time and consideration of my application for a variance. My husband, Grant Elliott, and I bought our land, owns on Juneberry Lane, the year that Grant retired from thirty-three years of teaching for West Bonner County. It was our dream to retire here. Because I was still working in Spokane and Cheney, we had to defer our move. Unfortunately, Grant passed away before we could realize our dream. For five and a half years, I have been trying to hold onto the property by renting it to cover our mortgage. Last March twenty twenty, I retired and spent several months improving the large log home prepared for sale. In August twenty twenty, I moved into a small log home to live out our dream. It is my desire to spend summer months enjoying my home and the beauty of tranquility of North Idaho that I cherish and hold so dear. I can assure you that the approval of my request for a variance will in no way impact the adjacent properties on or around Juneberry Lake. I am presently in Arizona, caring for my mother, and will join this hearing via Zoom. So this is a file for a lot size minimum variance. Our public hearing procedures is much like a court case. By the overview of the project, answer questions. Then we'll have public testimony in three minutes per person. The applicant will have an opportunity to rebut public testimony and then we'll get into deliberations between commissioners and we'll close. So this is the location of the property. As we can see, it appears to be already divided and that's because it's in drainage district seven, which I'll show you in the next slide. So this is for tax purposes only. So there are two parcel numbers, but it's just one parcel. So the lot size minimum variance the applicant is applying for, this is in a Ag Forest ten zone and they want to go below ten acre minimum to seven and a five and some change. But here's the drainage district and actually in the next slide, these are all the parcels too that follow that same drainage district. So we can see they're all kind of separated, but they're not all two parcels. They're just one for tax purposes. Site characteristics, the parcel is uh, unplatted thirteen point six seven acres. It's an Ag Forest retain zoning. Its land use comprehensive plan is Ag Forest ten twenty. It's accessed by Juneberry Lane, not a kind of maintained road. Uh, the site does not contain slopes of fifteen percent or greater. Generally described as flat. There are, there is wetland on site. Blue Creek runs along the eastern periphery of the parcel and uh, site is within the flood hazard zone. With the background, okay. So I'll continue with the background. So there are two different soil types on the property. Both are considered prime farmland, one if drained or irrigated rather. There's an individual well on the property shared between both. Cabs, there's an individual septic system, some Spirit Lake Fire District and Bonner County School District eighty-three. Here are the two soils. Run through the property. Here's a slope map and uh, the, the yellow is indicates fifteen percent or less sloping and the orange indicates uh, sorry fifteen and twenty-nine percent. The yellow and orange is thirty percent and above. As we can see, there's no slope that runs through the property of significant degree. The applicant's file was routed to a variety of agencies of which we did not get comment from. However, we did receive one public comment and there was a variety of concerns that they had, growth and development throughout the county. Loud music, barking dogs. Uh, the ramifications of future variance is being granted. If this were to be granted, there was concerns that this would set a precedent for future variances to be granted, uh, reducing the minimum lot size from ten acres. And just general concerns about quality of life, more people moving in. I believe they described it as a crowded bedroom. So these were the applicable standards that we used to look through the file and make a recommendation ultimately. And in the comprehensive plan, uh, in which this property lies within recognizes uh, areas where steeper slopes of thirty percent or greater prevail. And there's no slopes of that degree prevailing throughout the property. And I should also mention that we did notify the US War Service and they did not comment. So there's our analysis of the files. There's two residences built there, one in nineteen eighty, the other nineteen ninety-eight. Long before the applicant acquired, acquired the property. The homes were not constructed by the applicant. They're existing. Due to the fact that we did not receive agency comment, um, we've determined that there, it's not in conflict in general with public interest. However, there have been conditions of approval. Make sure the file conforms with Bonner County Revised Code. And these three conditions are no more primary building units are to be constructed because there's already two. Uh, the property shall be divided in a way that allows both of the homes that exist on the property to be on one lot apiece. And lastly, the applicant must submit a minor land division with Bonner County Planning Department in order to split the property. So we're recommending approval.
Questions of staff? I have one. What are the square footage of the houses?
Don't know off the top of my mind. Want to say one of them was fourteen hundred and the other one was twelve hundred from my recollection. I tipped me off.
No, one's twenty hundred and the other one's twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, okay.
So they're, they're above the nine hundred.
And Juneberry is a privately maintained road, correct?
That is correct.
And there's only three properties off Juneberry, isn't there?
I'd like to interrupt.
We're down here and then we'll, we'll ask you guys some questions there.
Perfect.
Open up the parcel on the map here.
I think that, yeah, just a site plan shows it.
So, second part of that question, each parcel would be able to add an A to you?
That's a, that's an interesting question and we could add that as a condition if you'd like.
No.
But yes, they would be able to.
Cause it's not a primary.
Having said nothing, I would assume they could.
So it's, it's, will be the same like everybody else.
That's correct.
So any questions I had?
And this could be done then with just a lot line adjustment? Is that what we're looking at?
Cause it's.
It would be a minor land division, so they'd have to get a survey. Surveyor would have to go out there, stake out the property, draw the lines. And you have to go through. Yes. Of Juneberry provides access to.
Yeah, it's, it's comes across and whiggles down into the well beside the creek between that bay and the railroad.
And this is, it is a unique piece of property, that's for sure. And they got a situation that I think we could.
Thanks, Chad. With the applicant? Okay. Well, Janie, would you facilitate that, please? And who is that? Pam, are you online? Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, just picked up a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm online. Thank you.
Okay, uh, do you have anything to add other than what staff discussed?
What I would add is that when you're looking at the map, you can see the brown area is where the two homes sit. Of course, there are, isn't any development in the drainage district. So the main large home sits to the back of that property and then my cabin sits closer up to the front corner of the property, closer to the drainage district. And we have two separate entrances. And for the last sixteen years that we've owned the property, we have put renters in both homes so that we could make the mortgage payment. And as I said, last year, um, I had to evict tenants from the large log home. I went to Priest River after selling my home in Rathdrum and took all of the proceeds from the sale of that home, put it into the big log home so that I could make it marketable for sale. And then in August, I moved into the little log home to live out my dream and that is my desire to come and spend the summers there in Bonner County in my log home. And then someday when I'm gone, that it, my children would have it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have no public comment online. Okay. Okay, somebody had a questions, the general public. You wanted to say something about?
I was trying to answer her question.
Get your questions.
We live four properties up from this particular site. And.
Name and address.
Brought to attention that.
Sir, can we get your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ed Glass. This is my wife Grace. We live at one seven seven Juneberry. Four properties up from Pam Elliott's house. And uh, as you, as was pointed out, and they, they call it a cabin. These are log homes. They're not even close to a cabin. One was twenty-eight hundred square feet. Now come on. At any rate, uh, they have been sitting on that property since nineteen eighty. This division, uh, this variance, it won't alter anything. There's no new septic tanks. There's no anymore traffic. There's no demand on our school system. Everything is just a simple division of property. So the large house can be sold and that the smaller one could be kept in her possession. And I, I, I know the property, I've walked it. And uh, with that, uh, I'll give up the rest of my minutes to these people over here.
We both agree.
We both agree.
Variance should be granted.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, name for the record. It's basically for people that are watching.
I'm Carrie Sutton. I'm with Next Home VIP Realty. I represent Carla and Tom Symbolic and I, they have been renting it since we started this and had to go through everything. So again, it is only proving for the fact that it's just going to make lives better for them and to give Pam her treat. So yes, I would totally be grateful if everybody, cause we are, we are close to just getting it done and letting them live on their dream of having it separated.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Tom Symbolic, so my wife and I.
My name's Tom Sembalk. So my wife and I are looking at purchasing the property. I currently serve Bonner County as a sheriff's deputy here for the last seven years. We're looking to make this somewhere where we can develop into our home and raise our kids and not just be sort of the community, but be part of it. And we hope that you guys will allow us to purchase this property and make a dream home for our family and be able to raise our kids here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Very service to the county, too. Okay.
Hi. I guess I'm kind of repeating what was said, but my name's Laura Deland. I work for Century 21 and I represent Pam. But it is a very unique property and it's the way that it's set up, it is already set up for two single-family residents. They have separate driveways. They have separate addresses. I mean, it's so, like the gentleman said, it doesn't really change anything on this road, except that she can sell the big house and be able to keep the small house. So, anyway. Thank you.
Okay, closed public comment. We'll open it up for commissioners' deliberations.
So I've got a procedural question. I'm not trying to throw anything in here, but so the con plan, its egg force 1020, right? And okay, so I see. So varying from a 10 acre park, because it's 10 acres own. All right. So we don't, we don't need a con plan amendment to rural residential, for instance.
So basically, we're leaving the zoning place. The first consideration was to change. Change.
Yeah, yeah.
Was against the zoom out, wasn't it?
Yeah, that would, that would certainly track with the comments about, well, this could lead to blah, 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 blah. As we've seen up and down bay over the last few months.
It just made more sense. And we, we've granted some of these on administrative level, not to set the example, but we have and we've used those conditions, those conditions.
Which is interesting because that shows that the administrative process is not just to give away. It comes with conditions.
And then on the subdivision right across the road from them, there's a lot of smaller sites through there also. Estates Loop.
Oh, 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 yes. Yeah, it's down there.
Go the other way.
Yeah. Anyway.
In any case, that's not what they're going to do.
No, I mean, that's, that's.
That's the variance is, or is to help people out.
Just over. Thanks to that for the case.
Certainly think it's appropriate.
Oh, yeah.
So we're looking for a motion.
Commissioner Reed, I move to approve this file, B005-21, requesting a lot size minimum variance to create an approximate 7.97 and a 5.7 acre lot in an 8F10 zone, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was repaired and testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of laws written, the action that could be taken to obtain the variances to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This section does not result in it taking private property.
Commissioner Reed has made a motion to approve B0005-21 variance, lot size minimum, Elliott Grant. Is there a second?
Commissioner Davis, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Davis with a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Good luck, you guys.
Sometimes. There you go. Hey, that's cool. Welcome to the neighborhood. Wow, that's neat. Thank you for that.
We're already living there. Give my.
Well, yeah, but still, that's a, that's a, that's a.
Good to meet you as well.
We are grateful to see that gesture.
They've been sharing.
Well, it helps, yeah.
Can I do it? I like dogs.
Right there.
Well, my dog, anyway.
Yeah.
Like dogs until that dog bites you.
Yeah, that dog is.
They are so well.
Okay.
I have a German short hair, Chesapeake Bay Retriever mix.
Oh, wow.
German short hairs, we've had pure breeds in the past, extremely intelligent. Chesapeake Bay Retrievers, not so much. So we ended up with an extremely intelligent, stubborn dog. Not the way to go.
Right, sir. Thank you. We're going to finish up here.
Let me talk about the barking dogs. Those barking dogs are over on Dandy Road, not even on Juneberry.
Oh, goodness. You're welcome.
Thank you so much for.
Okay, staff, you got five minutes. And no one can yield their time.
There you go. There's our BLPs for our year today.
Yeah.
500.
We're shooting at 305 the last time we talked about.
Yeah, we were capping against.
This is last Friday. On Monday, we took in 15 or at over 50.
Over 500.
Yeah, we, last Friday's work, so. I just, hey, we're just, we're just busy. We're at 16 minor land divisions. Took in 10 on Friday and Monday, five and five.
I remember. It's only April.
Yeah.
So people are still, people are still doing the push, you know, April, May, slow down in June or July.
Well, it's the, it's the subdivision ordinance. It's going to the board on May 12.
Yeah.
So we took that summer.
Yeah.
So we are, our hearings are booked. We, we just finished canceling 7-1 today. So 7-1 is now full. Um, next week, we have seven files on the agenda. So
Yeah.
So this idea of jumping to conclusion.
Oh, boy. Yeah, right.
Finding the motions. I don't know. I don't know. Whatever you need. I will talk to staff about identifying ways to shorten the presentation. And the choir's here.
I mean, if there's a contentious file, proofread.
So you know, the problem is, is I read everybody's file, but nobody reads mine.
And you got to start from scratch. You can't.
Oh, that's a tough order. That's a tough.
Isn't that your secretary's job?
Well, that's.
Yeah.
She's doing everything else right now.
Yeah, I know. That's Josh's job.
Well, no, Josh is his secretary. That's something nice. Deskies together. We got to get you a haircut.
Which one?
It wasn't a good one.
Which one did you get cut?
I need to get another haircut.
Ah, okay. Two or three more.
Take him down to the PX. Bear again, and we'll get him a haircut.
Yeah, I know. Some barber's going to give you a haircut.
We are, we're good. 18 employees. We're full. My team is full. We have have, we've hired a compliance permit manager that is in charge of the three permit texts and the three compliance. So that's helped with alleviating some of that workload, managing that front. The, we have eight planners. So so it's, so it's a matter of training and moving work around and workload. And one of those planners is only doing BLPs right now, only taking in BLPs. So we have three people that take in BLPs and we have one person that approves them. And he's not, he's not doing too bad. He's only about 35 behind. So.
Out of 500, that's not bad.
Yeah. He's not doing too bad. So the, the amount of emails and stuff he has to coordinate, phone calls, information, he does a great job. The, the floodplain stuff, the bigger projects, we now farm out to the county engineering department. They review all of our floodplain stuff. So we've been able to pass that along. We've got Chad and Swanny that are working with Senior Don to work on the comprehensive plan. They've met a couple times now.
So we're tentatively meeting every Monday morning at nine. And at this point, we've been meeting and talking about things for about two hours. And that, whether it's going to continue that much or whatever, I'm trying to work so we can just step through this thing logically. Anyway, more later.
The, we're going to bring you a couple ordinance changes here in the next few weeks on, because of their non-conforming use in the gravel pit stuff. So that's coming down the pipe. We'll be bringing in some more ordinance changes also that go further down the road. Still trying to address mining in the county. Make sure that we've got everything covered. We're rocking and rolling. We're on zone change number 20. We took in zone change number 20. So we took in 16 last year. So folks are trying to rezone their properties and divide them down. So we, we've been issuing permits faster than we're creating new lots. So that's been starting to show up in the subdivision. I think, I think in the next two years, subdivisions are going to be a big topic that the county has to work through. We need to, we need to look at maybe a master plan community ordinance. We should probably continue to review our subdivision code.
So, speaking of, I showed you, because this is the March 2021 issue of Sandpoint Living Local, one of the magazines about Sandpoint.
There it is, the clubhouse.
No, this is the, this is the layout, the lot layout, with what I take as, as these properties are sold for greens. All, because I say that, because right here it says, these are available, pending, there's two pending and all these are available, I guess. But pending sales.
They're definitely offered for sale, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Which is abolished this.
That's what I thought.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Understand that those lots are being created through a boundary line adjustment that is intended to be.
Those, the two pending sales.
So, so again, it's by us adopting that boundary line adjustment ordinance in our subdivision, it'll go to the board on May 12th. We will be able to have say in the future. So.
Because this is, and plus the fact that they're all oh. No, this is Camp Bay. This is a green property. So there's, this is 10 acre zoning, by the way.
Except they took, they took half acre, quarter acre lots and adjusted the power.
Yeah, the ones that were here along the shoreline and so forth. There were 21 lots?
Yeah.
Because we've got 2.7, 3.9, 2.9, so forth, so forth, so forth, along, along the shore and the secondary lots.
It can't be any smaller than the smallest.
That you started with, yeah. So they've worked it.
Did the county vacate the right of way?
Yes. County did.
Yes, the commissioners did.
It was two weeks ago.
The, the old adage, it comes down to the dollars. I think they were marketing the whole property for 13 and a half million. If you total up the lots here, which again, that looks like advertised for sale to me, it's considerably more than 13 and a half million if all of them sell what they're saying. Just to let you know.
Yeah, and I don't, my guess is it sold for quite a bit less than that, but.
I, oh, yeah, I mean, the Greens didn't.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know. There's been some things going on.
Yeah.
Just figuring out. Oh, no, I'm just saying. There's a little black ops community up and down, people.
Barn burner.
It wasn't on purpose.
Well.
There are definitely some changes coming to the county. So subdivision is going to be.
It's a lot, it's a lot of.
Training access.
Still a lot.
That's pretty high.
Yeah, still. I'm sure you just have to wait shoreline and all that stuff.
Yep.
I don't know. I, I guess, and half of that, because it was boundary line adjustments, it didn't, the public didn't see it.
And even though. They came in and got a certificate of compliance maybe two years ago.
Yeah.
On those 21.
Yeah, because they were there. They were the old lease lots.
Yep. And it actually ended up, it actually started about four years ago when the assessor's office started assessing that this is the virtual lots. And so then that's when the deeds appeared and that's when all the proof appeared.
And half of that, those were, those were just tax. Just answered before. Public didn't see it.
Who's talking? Who's talking?
Or is that us?
Yeah.
Don, help me understand the concern, just that, that it wasn't in the forefront.
Well, right, we're always hearing, and we heard it tonight. We didn't know. You only send it out to 300 feet from the boundary. We didn't know. How do you get this better? We've talked about, well, better, but the whole thing of transparency. And granted, these are lot line adjustments. That's of your own stuff. It's not anybody else's. But the public perception is, especially, who knows how many people picked this up March 1st and started reading it and saying, whoa, wait a minute, that looks to me, there's nothing mentioned about, those are adjusted lot lines on those flat maps. And they're all for sale, which again, I don't know what.
I think you'll see there's, at least in the other ads I've seen and on their website, there's some fine print that talks about being subject to county approval.
Yeah, yeah.
But they do appear to be being offered for sale.
And again, if those are, took existing lots and just adjusted lines, then there's existing lots for sale. So that's okay. But if they're new lots, and there shouldn't be any in there.
So.
Anyway, that's the concern. It's just, it's just transparency. People see this kind of stuff and they, hey, it's a delay.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do with the subdivision. That's one of the things we're trying to accomplish. This, this subdivision right here is boundary line adjusted.
Which.
They started, they created 20s and then they adjusted them down to 5s and 7s.
Yeah, yeah.
So it, it's all boundary line adjustments.
Yeah.
And so, so transparency, what, what do you mean? Right? That's why we tried to update the ordinance was so it can, we can address these types of issues.
But even, even with the updated ordinance, I think, wouldn't they still have been able to do what they did?
In the case of Camp Bay?
Yeah. Oh, with it, no, they would, but we would review it. We put some standards in the boundary line adjustment for an application. We'd review it against certain standards.
So it isn't just a paper exercise.
The one thing that might be interesting is, I don't know what the code said about roads in boundary line. But one of the things that they were trying to accomplish was being able to have private roads with those lots, which, you know, you'd have to do a PUD to get that done.
Yeah, PUD or conservation.
No, well, you might be able to do.
Conservation subdivision or something along those lines, but I don't know. You know, it's and it, I don't know. I think that was. I think that was, again, we're going to hear that forever from the public that shows up here. We didn't know, what are you trying to do? It's already been decided, blah, 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 blah. Can't find it on the website.
I didn't move here a year ago to have neighbors.
That's right.
We bought 10 years ago.
We're still online. That door, that big iron gate, that swinging shut behind me. I want to hear it go click.
There's a gravel pit, but I figured that way it'd be quiet.
Anybody still left on Zoom? It's a delay. Yeah, it's, it's terrible delay.
Okay. We got excited.
I don't know.
Okay, that's all I got.
So a couple of things.
They're gonna have a marina, I think, over here.
If I, yeah. If I could suggest
At least, at least that's
A couple of times now, like what Chad did tonight, explaining the, the procedure. I think that needs to come from us. Yeah, it, it, you know. The staff puts together the staff report and reviews it against code and makes a recommendation of us, but we were in the hearing. We were in the action. So that I think that should be cited by us and that's typically what we've done in the past. So um I don't know if I brought this up before, but so we go through one of the tests. Oh, like we, I think just about all of them to make sure that it's in the public welfare to do whatever. And the test apparently for that is whether or not a public agency has commented on it.
Right.
But I, I don't know. And that gets, I noticed just hearing that and watching the public sitting out here, a few eyebrows were raised. Well, we just told you that it's not in the public interest. How do we either explain that further or make it so that they understand?
So, so on, on cases like, like the gravel pit. Where the applicant is going to be a lot more intimately involved in it. I'm going to let him answer some of that stuff. So the challenge was, is that I didn't get that comment prior to the staff.
Right, that was
So for me to include it there, now I could have reviewed it and included it, but obviously he had done that. I knew that he had done that. So I let him present that.
I guess it's just, I don't know. I don't know that the county code prescribes what the test is for public interest. I, because again, and, and we're taking it as we've heard consistently is, well, we didn't get an agency comment, therefore there's no public impact. Well, those are public agencies put in place to protect the public interest. Yes, but I think it's broader than that. So I don't know how to, I don't know how to define it, but maybe it's something we need to look at. And my last thing. So we all had tonight copies of the minutes from the previous. Did anybody use these copies tonight? No. That's a whole bunch of paper this time. Yeah, and I, I know the reason why. I know. Somebody will say, I haven't seen it. I know.
Yeah, you could just put the minutes we're viewing on the thumb drive.
No, that's good. Yeah.
I think there's a question about it. Yeah.
Sure. Typically, nobody says that they, they have not reviewed the minutes either. We haven't.
Oh, yes, they have many times.
I don't remember that much in the last five years. Okay.
Because I wasn't printing them.
Yeah, I don't
But inevitably somebody
Somebody would say, I haven't. Which even then, if one person out of five or six or seven says, I haven't reviewed it, does that lost the deal? Probably not. If then the, if that person objects and says, I, I, I want to put this off. I want to review them. Fine, put it off till next meeting. So I, I just considering, you know, I grow trees. I don't want to cut them down to make staff reports. That sounds like a good, good way to do it. Yeah, I know. We've had stacks of those.
I think putting them on the drive is fine. That way, if we have a question, we can all look at them.
Yeah, I mean, even right then, you know, just, okay, take two, review it.
It's, it's fine, Don. It's all just radiative.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure that when the county buys recycled paper too, right? Probably do, a certain percentage. Okay.
That's a really good point. There are probably it really is good opportunity for us to go back there. Because maybe there's stuff in the staff report that is not we've just been doing it.
Yeah, it just, it's old cut and paste. Get you again. Yeah, and, and sure. Yeah, that's a, it's an unfortunate part of this whole business is keeping stuff current.
Fixing stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, oh my.
Anything else?
I don't, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't spot it right off. I took a little look the other day and I couldn't really
I mean, that has to get comics. It's like fish game. They're looking out for the animals in the state. The IDL is looking out for their own state interests. IDT is looking out for their own highways, like
Yeah.
That, that, other than the, the health department, that's really
Which, which all have an element of public protection. But
But not the protection.
But that's not, I mean, you know, the comments we had. What about the wells? What about the noise? What about the dust? What about all the stuff? Okay, they're, they're purview somewhere and it appears that it's covered, but and especially if we don't get a comment.
Right. The thing that struck me about that one is it would have been nice to get a comment from ITD that says we don't think there's a problem.
Yes, it would.
Forty laypeople in the room were all saying, oh, this is going to be a big problem, which I understand that's the immediate reaction, but it'd be nice if we had some expertise or actually work and you could point to it and said, well, people whose job it is to look out for the safety of highways.
Yeah.
Or they said, no, they said, you have to do X, Y, Z.
So it's a variance that
Okay, well, right, it would be the variance that is causing public harm. Sure, that was one of the tests. These two, five or seven.
That's why we have
Yeah, well, that's, that's, yeah, but even then, sometimes they sneak through.
They're out of gravel. There's nothing to
Yeah, cut and paste is wonderful. It's helped us out a lot, but it can get in our way too.
Which I understand, but it'd be nice, it's all NIMBY at the end of the day, a lot of it, but it'd be nice to have some expertise to point to and say
Right. It isn't a problem that you perceive that it is.
Right, right.
Comes in with, with the water issue. It's the same, the same thing. And maybe that we should have fire explaining constant aquifer versus mining for water, which was constant for here up on the mountain is mining.
Aquifers don't usually flow uphill. Unless you drill like this.
You know, and as a rule, blasting is not going to hurt anyone.
No.
The aquifer starts in Blanchard Lake, doesn't it? Isn't that, were they pinpointed it?
I don't know.
You provided a study several years ago and that's what they had come up with. They put dyes in and
Right, it, it, it goes up, that was, got this lobe that goes up to the Blanchard area, which makes sense because that's, that's perched water in the whole area there. And it's just coming down into the Ratten Prairie Aquifer. So so, cool. Courtesy of VNS.
End it.
Oh, end it.
Oh, in what? Actually, okay, we are continuing to, are we downstairs? Upstairs?
May 6th up here.
You don't know. So we're continuing the meeting, the planning and zoning commission to May 6th in the building at 1500 Highway 2 Sandpoint. And it's
I know, I was watching you sit there.